Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025.
It is.
2:15 PM. Apologize for the slightly delayed start. We have some materials that needed to be updated, so we're ready to go. And calling this meeting to order, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Grant.
All right, if you'd join me. I pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Next, proceed with the land acknowledgement, Vice Chair.
We would also like to start today with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous Salish people whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. We have an agenda to approve. There have been revisions based on discussions this morning. That includes the items noted in yellow in the top corner. I believe, just to call attention to another, there's four reappointments to the Planning Commission as items five R, S, T, and U. And so, call attention to that as well as the other items that we have indicated. And so, is there an emotion to approve this amended agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as it was discussed at the agenda setting because some of these items weren't discussed. So, you know, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it was, as it was discussed. I want to kind of stick to, I want to try to stick to process. But if somebody wanted to make an amendment or to my motion, that's on them. But I'll make an amendment to approve the agenda as it was discussed at our previous meeting today.
So, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the four items. Five M and five O were both discussed this morning. Five S, T, and U were discussed this morning, not necessarily five R. And then, that last bullet on the public hearing, removing the second motion for resolution. And that was discussed. I'm specifically looking at consent item R. Okay, so, there's a motion. Is there a second to that motion? I have to start there.
Second, the motion for discussion. I would like to hear from Commissioner Grant.
Motion in a second has been made to approve the amended agenda with the exception of five R because that wasn't discussed or approved this morning for conclusion. Is there a motion to amend that?
Oh, I'm learning how this works. So, I'm just gonna be very, I thought that we, you know, I had mentioned to Amy in that meeting this morning that if I could get a copy of the application that was presented by Eric Casino to review before this meeting, then I would recommend him for, just because I had not actually seen the full application. And so, that was said in early, the meeting earlier today. But I am also not opposed if this is something you want to wait on, that we can do that too. So, yeah.
Do you want to make an amendment to the motion to approve the agenda or not?
Um, yes. Well, I don't, I mean, no, let's just leave it. It's fine. I mean, I make an amendment to leave the, amend the, as, I don't know how to say it, so.
Leave the, leave the motion as Vice Chair Fournier has, that would just be voting.
I have just a point of clarification. If we were to remove this item from the agenda today, does that mean we would need to wait to reappoint this planning commissioner until the next regular business meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So, next week.
I mean, there are other meetings where board can take action if it was needed to. But typically, yes, it would be removed till the next board meeting on the schedule, which-
We have a planning commission meeting tomorrow, is that right?
There'll be a quorum with the other appointments made.
And there's no action on the agenda, is what the director said. It was more of an informational meeting. And an invitation has already been sent out to all the members who, whose term expired in December to attend it, just as an informational piece.
You indicated to Mr. Casino, for example, that you intended to reappoint him. You know, it doesn't sound like there's a consequential vote being taken. He can attend the meeting and get the information, just like he would. And then-
Yeah.
That's one option. The other option is you can make a motion to amend that, or you can move to amend the agenda to add him. If you're confident-
Well, I, yeah, I'm confident in this. So, I moved to amend the agenda to add this back and as an R. I have met with multiple people and met with multiple, multiple people and done some recruitment and decided that this was my recommendation and spin.
If there's a second, we see-
So, you'd make a, yeah, you'd make a motion to, you'd move to amend my motion to add, to amend the agenda to place your item back on there. And then you would, there'd be debate on that, and then we're doing-
Is there a second to the amendment?
Sorry. I second Commissioner Grant's amendment.
Okay, with the motion, second, discussion on the amendment only, whether or not we should add back item five R.
I just, for me, it's procedural. I think that we're, you know, we're lacking in that department. And so, you know, I'm not, I'm not very, I'm not very good at parliamentary stuff. But I want to, you know, in my mind, if we walk out of an agenda review session and we've all come to consensus about what's going to be on the agenda, then that's the end of that. And then we, as individual commissioners, can't change that agenda between, and I'm not saying that's what anybody did, I'm just, or anybody did anything wrong, just that, that space between when we're not meeting and when we come here again, we can't change what we've already decided and told the public we're going to do until we get in here. And then you can make an emotion, once, once it's on the table, then you can make an emotion to modify that agenda. But what we've already told the public we're going to be meeting and discussing, in my mind, is what we have to first present. It can't have been modified in the interim by an, by an individual commissioner.
I thought it was pretty clear this morning that Commissioner Grant had intended to get the information that she needed to be able to make this decision today. I remember that from this morning.
Sure. And if she did that, then we would come in here and we would present the agenda that we discussed at our previous meeting. And then Commissioner Grant would say, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. And that's when we decide it again, when we're, when we're convened again. Because it's, it's, it's our agenda, when we're in a, when we're in a group, it's our agenda to modify. And we give it to the county manager, and it's his agenda to, like, safeguard. And then when we come back in and we're in the public again, that's when we, as a commissioner, as commissioners, can convene and modify it again. At least how I conceptualize it.
I think what's, I'm a little confused because I think what's hanging you up maybe, Vice Chair, is the fact that it's printed on here. Like, if this hadn't been printed on here, which I take your point on that, then the same, we'd be in the same procedural position. Commissioner Grant could make an amendment to the motion and we could, we could add it. So, maybe it shouldn't have been pre-printed because it really shouldn't have been contemplated until the board discussed it together, like, right now. But that's kind of beside the point at this point. Item R, okay, it's printed on there. But if it wasn't, she could still make this motion.
Certainly. But I shouldn't, I, as an individual commissioner, shouldn't be able to, outside of our agenda-setting meetings, go and walk things onto the agenda without all of us knowing and having, like, participated. And there's, you know, there's work things that happen. And, you know, Commissioner so-and-so might be meeting with the Assistant County Manager and County Manager to get an item on there. But that, in my mind, is different and is a slower walk than when we walk into our official business meeting. And then there's, you know, something, I'm not going to call this a surprise, but something close to a surprise.
And I'll just clarify, I didn't walk anything to anyone or ask anyone to add to this. It was, I mentioned it in the earlier meeting. And then was asked if I had a chance to review the application and then said yes. And so, that's what has occurred. So, I'm sorry. I totally, and I want to totally acknowledge what you're saying, Wayne, that we do want to get to procedural. And I need to learn some of those things. And so, I do appreciate you kind of walking me through those steps. I just don't think that was the intention.
I don't think there was any ill intentions. I'm just-
Well, anyway, I see the point and I agree with the point as far as that procedure. But, because I did, I did kind of hear it a little differently this morning, just for what it's worth. I mean, I thought you were saying that you wanted to review all applica- I didn't know you were only looking to review Mr. Casino's application. I thought you'd said, I want to see all the applications. And it sounded to me like you needed more time. So, I wouldn't have expected it on today, but-
That's the way I walked away as well.
But that's beside the point. You can make them, you could have walked in here with no knowledge and made a motion to, and again, I might have, if I needed more time to take a vote, I would probably oppose that motion. But I see planning commission nominations very differently because each commissioner nominates. The board does have the latitude to say yes or no. But I think it's our practice to give great deference in the absence of some extremely compelling reason to your nomination for a complaining commissioner. So, given that that's the kind of nomination it is, and you're, and you're confident in your decision, then I don't think there's anything procedurally improper about you amending the motion. So, I guess I would, I would support potentially your amendment. I don't see good reason not to. Any other discussion on the amendment? I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. So, we now have an agenda that's been amended to approve. So, is there any further discussion on the emotion, on the agenda as now amended? Okay, call for the vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, a motion, so then, and it's already printed up in that way. So, we have the convenience of that. So, this will be the agenda, and we'll move forward to the next piece, which is item two, proclamation regarding commitment to building a courthouse and community trust.
Thank you so much, Chair. I want to thank the commissioners for their leadership in setting a direction to look for a long-term and permanent solution to some of our space needs. And just wanted to state at the outset that the proclamation today is not any type of direction to staff to go out and do anything. It's simply an acknowledgement of what the commissioners have already in different meetings asserted, that there's a commitment to look for a long-term solution for our space needs, that takes into consideration the need for courtroom space and upgrades, and that the county is on a pathway to do that through a multiple, multitude of different endeavors and strategies. And so, with that, I want to thank the stakeholders who have been instrumental in working with county staff, providing input and perspectives to commissioners on where we were headed, which was a very large investment into facilities that, as reports have come back from our capital team, is beyond its useful life. And the commissioners, with that input, have made a decision to change directions. And we really feel like that is a prudent use of county resources. It also opens the door for us to go out for a competitive process to solicit what's the best configuration for the county's space needs, considering the different dynamics of the different offices, departments, and the courtroom space that we need specifically for the long term. And so, with that, just a lot of appreciation for everyone that has come together to make this happen, and for the unified vision and direction from our commissioners to set this direction. Josh, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think appreciation is right on. If there was a space to allow for our stakeholders to provide some input, we appreciate the high caliber of folks that have participated. And I would suggest to the Chair that providing that opportunity would be useful. But as we move forward in the rebuilding of the trust towards the larger courthouse facility, this step in the scaled-back process has been a collaborative process. Just wanted to express appreciation to the stakeholders, as well as to the central services project management team who's gotten creative in trying to rebuild this process.
So, we have many of our stakeholders here, Chair. And we're thankful that they've taken time out of their busy schedule. Some of them have moved a lot of things around so that they can be here because they believe in this process and they believe in the county's direction. And some of them are prepared to make a few remarks if you would allow that.
From the floor to Judge Buckley. I'm guessing you're going to have a few things to say. I'll start with you.
I think you're picking on me because I'm the old guy around here. Some people call me Mr. Institutional Memory. That's just a nice way of saying it. Commissioner Mensah remembers the Florida County Commissioners, thank you. I know that Leonard said that the date on the proclamation isn't giving a sense of an order from the board to county staff to start this process. And I, I understand, appreciate that. But what I also appreciate is just the fact that we're here talking about it, in my mind, is a new beginning. We are understanding the importance of this. And when I was discussing with somebody earlier this morning that I was going to be here for the board and, before the board and hopefully saying a few things, they said, okay, you tell me, how do you sell a courthouse? What's your, what's your bottom line? My bottom line is this, is every day we wait, it becomes more expensive. We started this process back in 2013, when the county recognized there were space limitations, and just space limitations, without looking at the nature of the structure we were operating in, and started conducting studies. In 2015, they did a much more sophisticated analysis of that. And I'm not going to review all the findings they made. Those findings are available to you. But that engendered in Superior Court and District Court, an understanding that everybody else was beginning to realize what we realized working in those buildings, which we, they are wholly inadequate for the purposes of the functions we engage in. So, we then became on our own, without any direction from the existing board, big advocates for making a change. And that change had to be a new courthouse. And so, Judge Murphy and I started meeting with people and made clear that we didn't have a portfolio representing the board. It was, we were representing ourselves and the agencies for which we are responsible. And we just met with more and more private parties and public parties and began to look at who might be partners for this effort. It was very clear from these conversations that the courthouse that was built, finished in 1978, I believe, was intended to last about 35 to 40 years. We are well beyond that. And the concept of then spending $50 million to renovate something that we are already well beyond its useful life, I am really pleased that the board decided, you know, that's not appropriate. We need to commit ourselves to what is the best- We need to commit ourselves to what is the best resolution, which is understanding we need to make the commitment to a new courthouse. The location of the current courthouse is a bad location. It was cheap land at the time and that's why it was put there. And they followed that up by making a cheap building, a building that in no way represents a courthouse and doesn't take into any account the functional operations of a courthouse. It was not designed with that in mind in any courthouse. Architect would tell you that and there are all kinds of deficiencies. The other obvious site-location issue is that there are two routes of ingress and egress to that courthouse, Courthouse Hill and off the back from Route 101. And we learned when we had the Nisqually earthquake, which closed Deshute's Parkway for two years, that we were now down to one ingress and egress. And those of us who worked there and had to depart the courthouse on our vehicles, not on foot or on a bike, realized how problematic that was, not only for the traffic issues, but, you know, when I went to talk to the fire department folks about this concept, they said, yeah, for two years, we only, we ran the risk of, if there's a fire up on that facility, how do we get there and feel like we can get there easily? You know, we're going to have to go around the back way and hope that there's not a large traffic issue. So the site and the building itself are wholly inappropriate. Every day we wait just makes that worse. I am really thrilled that this commission has decided to take this big step. And I will say, from our efforts the last time, one of the holdbacks or one of the things that really made it more difficult was there wasn't unanimity among the board for this approach. And I really appreciate the board saying and recognizing that every day we wait is a day we're pushing this off to some other commission to have to deal with this hard decision because somebody's going to have to deal with it at some point in time. So I appreciate the courage that this board is showing in doing this. It's not a politically easy decision to make and I appreciate that, but it is the right decision. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And I will, last thing I'll say is I am retiring at the end of this term. I will not work in a new courthouse. So everything I say about building a new courthouse and the need for it has nothing to do with me ever being there. I may visit it, in fact, I will, but I won't work there. So it's that important and I will do anything I can to assist the county in those areas.
Any questions for Judge?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Judge Skinder?
All right, thank you.
All right, well, I also want to say thank you. And Commissioner Grant, we're going to be having you come over and be able to explore the courthouse and see it. But this board has really grappled with a problem that's been present in the county since I came to Thurston County in 2000. It has been well-known that this building is failing. And one of the things you all have heard me say, and it's something I'm concerned about, is this building could, both buildings could fail at any time. And then what would the county do? The county would have to deal with a temporary solution and a permanent solution. Just this morning, we had our IT department that has worked really hard to try to make our systems work well. We had an upgrade plan for some of the audio recording systems. And they worked overtime on Sunday and Monday to try to make those changes happen. As I understand it, because there have been so many different levels of attempted, very cost-effective, some might use the word cheap, over the years, those things stacked on top of each other when there's an attempt to upgrade, then we end up with this, unfortunately, where things start failing. So this morning at 7:30 in the morning, I hear from IT, they're on site, they tell me, only two of your six courtrooms can work this morning. Yeah, four courtrooms, we can't make the audio recording system work. As we often do in Superior Court and we do in District Court, we found a way to revitalize Kristin, our court administrator, our operations manager, we huddled up, we talked to IT, we got our court reporters in the courtrooms where the audio systems weren't working. The ones that did have the audio system were able to put our criminal calendars in those and we made it work, as we often do. But that's because you've got great people, and I mean that all across. You know, one of the things I hear often is people say, well, the courthouse is rundown. Well, I would tell you, the people that we see working on trying to keep the building in good shape are doing good work. But the problem is, this building was not designed to last this long. And one of the points that I've tried to come across is that we need a modern, correctly-sized, safe and secure courthouse that's accessible to everybody. And let me just break that down. The building went into effect in 1978. You know, just to give a little historical context, I think the internet, as we know it, didn't even come into existence until 83, really wasn't used the way we use it in terms of the world wide web until the 90s. So that building was not designed to be used the way that we use it today. We, especially after we went through the pandemic, we have hybrid court, where we have people physically appearing and we have people appearing through Zoom. That building, both buildings, struggle badly with trying to do the technology things that we want to do. We have Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Toonheim here, for the Public Defense Office and for the Prosecutor's Office. They are trying to do things in a way that is modern, that they're trying to be able to have witnesses appear, they're trying to do all these things. We have Marie Doctor here, representing the bar. And again, our courthouse is not a modern courthouse that can do a lot of the things that we need it to do. We make it work, but we make it work in a way of cobbling together solutions because you have people that really care and really try to make it work right. The correctly-sized, this building was not designed to be a courthouse, either building. The way it was designed did not use space to its best effect. We have courtrooms that are not big enough, we have office space that's not big enough. And again, we make it work. And Commissioner Grant, I've always said, because you haven't had it yet, I want to give you a tour, because I know you've seen it, but I want to give you a tour. But all the other commissioners have been able to do that. We have certain offices that are really closets, that we've got two or three people in. It is not a correctly-sized courtroom, and we see that in a lot of different ways. The safe and secure part, everyone that comes to the courthouse, for District Court or Superior Court, has to feel safe. That has to be something that we know, that our citizens, when they come to court and they're stressed and they're going through something that's traumatic, that they know they're going to be safe. And right now, I'm concerned, and we've talked about the reasons for those concerns. Accessibility, again, when we look at accessibility, a lot of our courthouse, if you're going through and your mobility challenged in some way, that courthouse is very difficult to make its way through. And we are the state capital. We have to have a courthouse that all of our citizens can go into and can use and can be comfortable and can seek justice when they need to. So what I want to wrap it around to, and I won't take all the time, even though I could, is I appreciate that this board has really looked at, how can we solve this problem? We can't solve it with just saying, okay, community, it's going to cost X amount of money, this is going to be a huge thing on the ballot. We have to be more creative. And what I appreciate about each and every one of you is that you appreciate, we need to be creative. And I really appreciate Josh and Leonard, because they've taken that approach, that we need to find different ways to be able to fund this. We need to look creatively at what county resources that we have, and we need to look at ways of whether it makes sense to have all of the government together. And maybe it does. And so I want to thank you. Because when I came to Thurston County in 2000 from Lewis County, it was known that this courthouse was failing then. And there had been attempts over the years, really well-meaning efforts, but we're still there. And every day, I'm like, what problem will we have to overcome today to be able to have court? And we do it. But the fact that you're all willing to address this and to come up with a long-term plan is huge. And so that's been the thing. We all need, every single stakeholder that uses the court, they need more space, they need more things, because our population's grown so much. But we're all willing to forego that short term because we know we need a long-term solution. And so thank you very much. Do you all have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other stakeholders? Nope, okay, just giving the floor. Okay, and I guess we're ready for our proclamation. Any comments from the board?
I guess I will just say that there was an emphasis from the county manager on the space needs and, but I want to draw attention to the, in the fifth and sixth, whereas there's a.
Sorry to interrupt. I do believe we have someone from, I believe it's the Association, correct?
Marie Doctor.
Thank you for being here with us today.
Yes, sorry, didn't catch your hand.
I'm Marie Doctor. I'm the president-elect of the Thurston County Bar. I'm technically not listed as a stakeholder, although I was in previous times when this issue came up. So I had a, I'm in a unique position because for about 10 years, I served as the courthouse liaison for the Thurston County Bar before I was on the board. And I have been on the board for about four years now and am now the president-elect. And so on behalf of the Thurston County Bar Association, we want to thank you for taking on this project as well. There is overwhelming support from our bar for a new courthouse or for some measure to address the issues which are recognized by our organization as individuals that use this courthouse every day, from both the public side, representing the public and representing individuals, and then our own use. Second thing is, we appreciate the cooperative effort that seems to be going on that was not recognized in the past because there was some disagreement among the commissioners. And I wanted to appreciate, recognize the appreciation for that as well. Speaking from myself, and not necessarily as the president-elect, but in the role that I played previously, I wanted to say that the problems that we've seen in the past seem to have come from the fact that there wasn't a organized or the entire commissioner board was not supporting this. And we appreciate that, or I appreciate that that is moving forward. I also appreciate the proclamations focused on there being, the environmental concerns being addressed and there being some sustainability, because that was one of the issues that came up from the community when we were, had the proposals previously. Moving forward, one of the things that we did or I did in my role was, I did a lot of public surveys, not just among attorneys, but among the community in general, got feedback from people using the courthouse. And as was mentioned by the judges, the accessibility is a huge issue at that courthouse from the pro se litigants that come in that are not represented by counsel, just having to be there, not having easy access, including things like, which may sound like a little thing, but like a nursing mom that doesn't have someplace to go, access through the internet, people that have trouble with mobility, not having an ease of egress or ingress. All of these things are things that came up that our general public feeling they're being denied access to the courthouse. And so those were all things that we looked at. And then once we have, or once you have some sort of plan, one, a couple of things I would point out is, it is nice to see that there is not a 100% public funding of this through taxes, where the board is actually looking at potentially this being part of a budgetary thing. That was a concern that we had seen in the past. And then I would recommend a lot of community education, because a lot of the public didn't understand the need. And so those are some things that I would point out, just as being in this position previously. I will tell you that I personally plan to be around to support whatever efforts are being made. And I know there is a great majority of the members of the bar that are also willing to be involved in however way we possibly can. And I don't know if you have any questions for me? I wanted to keep it brief, but. Okay, thank you.
I was just, I just wanted to make the point that the security issues are also emphasized in this proclamation. And I know that's been an ongoing issue of the deficiency of the buildings. Wanted to give adequate highlight to that. I am hopeful that we can find the right solution moving forward. I'll never forget my first week as a resident of Thurston County. I was a lawyer and I was sent by my employer to go file something or get an ex parte signature my first day on the job. And I drove and I think I got lost trying to find the courthouse. And then I finally got there and I remember just thinking, this is the courthouse for the capital of the state of Washington. I was pretty stunned. And then just, and then a second thought I had is, why is it here? I mean, the location is so bizarre. I mean, if you look at, if you look at the map as a crow flies, it's not that far from downtown, but as you see the way our materials and our roads connect, it's totally buried in an inappropriate location from my perspective. So hopefully all of that and many other things, including security and space, can be addressed collaboratively as we move forward. So no other comment. Commissioner Klaus?
I do have just a comment and one question as well. I won't, I won't take up too much time because we've heard from a couple stakeholders and they said it better than I probably ever could, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of the comments that we heard regarding the safety. For those who, not only those who work at the courthouse, but also those who are there, you know, just community members who have to be there for their own business, safety is a major issue. The dignity of our workers and our, and our community members who go to the courthouse is a big deal. We have outstanding court staff and judges and we, you know, they deserve a dignified place to do their business. I had, you know, I've toured the courthouse several times and the one thing that stands out to me the most is the jury room. Because I've always said, you know, I've never had the opportunity to serve on a jury. I wish I did, you know, whoever is responsible for that, please, a manifesting energy, I'd love to serve on a jury. But when I saw that jury room, I was like, this seems torturous for people who have to be in here for long periods of time. So that's all I'll say on the building itself. I want to appreciate the board for making this a top priority. When I came on board, hearing kind of what direction we were heading in before this decision was made, just made me cringe every time we talked about it. And I think that that was kind of the consensus energy in the room, whenever we would talk about the major remodel we were looking at before. So I thank the board for making this a top priority. And then I wanted to say, we did hear a comment just now about community education and the importance of that. And I wanted to kind of highlight that a little bit because I received a call earlier from a constituent, which I talked to the county manager about just briefly before the meeting. There was a constituent who was wondering if we could clarify a little bit on what types of configurations we've been exploring. And the county manager did touch on it a little bit with the comment about, you know, we are looking at the best configuration for the courthouse. But the proclamation title, commitment to building a courthouse, has raised some question marks for at least, you know, the constituent who called me and I imagine maybe some others who might be wondering if we're looking at new construction from the ground up. And so I just was wondering if maybe the county manager could just provide a little bit of clarification on what types of configurations we've been exploring.
Sure. Thank you so much, Commissioner Klaus. Yeah, I think that the naming of the proclamation is really more pointing in the direction that we're going in a different direction than we were, which was a remodel. And the configurations that we've explored are whether we buy existing buildings, lease to own existing buildings, secure property for a future build. But none of that has been brought back for final consideration because what we're going to do based on commission direction is go out and solicit for proposals to bring back the best options for the board to consider. There are some parameters, like it has to be in the city limits of Olympia and some other things, space needs, et cetera. So we'll do a competitive process and look forward to come back to the full board and also the stakeholders to talk through what that process yields from an interest standpoint and definitely dig into the options at that time.
Great, thank you so much. And I appreciate you and everyone who's worked on this and the spirit of collaboration with our stakeholders that's gone into this process. It's just been really, really, you know, inspiring to see how different parts of the county can come together to, you know, develop and create something transformative, really, that we haven't looked at before. So I appreciate you and all the staff who have worked on this.
Thank you. I won't add much. I think the stakeholders have covered it very well. I just really want to thank all of you for being partners in this. I know it hasn't been an easy path. And Judge Skinder, I know what a pain it is to have to change courtrooms at the last year. at the last minute as you were talking about it. I had flashes of having to email everyone and then having to change the boards and notifying everyone about courtroom changes. So I, I really want to thank the partnership though that has gone into it and the communication. And I hope that as we continue to move forward, that that partnership and communication continues to remain open because it is going to be a lot of community trust that's going to have to be established and we're going to have to reach out. And if we're in this together, I think it's going to be more resounding than if we are in different paths. So also want to give a shout out to Tom and Rick who have been working on it from our staffing. And they've been kind of the point, a touch point people with all our stakeholders. So just thank you, Tom and Rick, for, for working with all of our stakeholders and communicating with all of them as changes came along. So.
Is there a ready for proclamation?
All right. This is proclamation Thurston County's commitment to building a courthouse and community trust. Whereas the community members of Thurston County are respected by their public officials through fiscal responsibility, providing governmental services and adherence to transparency. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners recognizes that many services provided by county government are important in maintaining a civil society, including access to justice, elections, licensing, financial affairs, taxing, infrastructure, environmental stewardship, and economic development. And whereas the justice system and the multiple functions of county government are best provided in fully functioning buildings that are a reflection of the respect for community members. And whereas the existing courthouse complex, which provides the main courtrooms for Thurston County District and Superior Courts is decades beyond its projected usefulness and it's failing and is failing. And whereas the courthouse complex is inadequate to address serious security, accessibility, and space needs currently and in the future. And no renovation of the current spaces can address those all of the needs. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has decided to forego an expensive renovation of the existing courthouse complex that could not address the serious security, accessibility, and space needs. And whereas Thurston County is in the process of a scaled back renovation of existing courthouse hill buildings as a short-term response to buildings that have exceeded life expectancy, as the county works diligently to meet the needs of county government through a new future courthouse complex. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners, judges, and all other elected officials are committed to collaboration in an enduring resolution for providing services in safe and accessible buildings that the residents of our community find dignified, functional, environmentally sustainable, and cost effective. And now therefore be resolved, the Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims the priority of a new courthouse and community trust and commits to a fiscally responsible, collaborative, and transparent process in which this goal is undertaken and adopted this 21st day of January 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners.
Let's move forward to public comment. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comment from the public. There are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. When called, please introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the board and meeting attendees may not donate that speaking time to any other speaker. The board does not directly respond to public comment unless the county manager may follow up with specific items.
Sure. Commissioner Klaus has a question.
I was wondering if we were going to do a picture for the proclamation with all of our stakeholders?
We can if you'd like.
They're all here. But they're all here.
Yes, let's do one real quick.
Yeah, they're like waiting.
They can please join us up front? Tom and Rick. Tom and Rick, join the picture, please.
All right, where are we at? Okay, I'll complete the speaking guidelines for public comment. No comments are allude offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. Comments that are commercial in nature. Remarks about pending land use permits or matters that could eventually come for the board on appeal. And finally, all written material provided to the county may be considered public record and subject to release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act 4256 RCW. So with that, I will go through folks who have signed up. And first up.
Chair, do you want to highlight that there is a public hearing at 3:30?
Sure. We have a 3:30 hearing regarding the countywide planning policy items. So if you're here for that, you will have to wait for half an hour and we'll break and public comment at that time. So let's just start with Mr. Trowbridge with Terry Stanley Ballard on deck.
I'm Brett Trowbridge. I live on South Patterson Lake. As usual, I'm here to talk about the lake plan. We're kind of in a crucial stage of our lake now. We've had the meeting with the Hernandez, the King County group that was supposed to arbitrate what we get. What the steering committee wanted was glyphosate and get rid of lily pads. And that's what Fernandez gave them. There's, there's nothing environmental at all about that procedure. And there's really no environmental hearing that's ever going to happen in this case, except in front of those of you who will be sitting on the Board of Health. So the question is the same as the one I keep raising every time I come, which is, are we going to use herbicides, pesticides in our drinking water? No one was aware that Patterson Lake feeds into McAllister Springs. None of the county commissioners were. I'm finally convinced on that was true. None of the commissioners were aware that many of the properties were left out, which the statute does not allow. That's been fine with everybody so far. Mr. Mensah, Ms. Mahia. Nobody knew that you don't even have jurisdiction. The bottom of the lake doesn't even belong to the taxpayers. It's our backyard. These one don't just strip out to the middle. So there's been a lot of very poor planning about this. And it's inevitable that it's going to end up being glyphosate and killing lily pads if you just let this go ahead that way. Now, I'm very gratified to hear from Mr. Hernandez that Joshua Cummings and Stephen Long have been appointed to cover what Mr. Gilder was doing. And that's certainly good. You certainly need somebody who's in charge and can make decisions. And so I applaud that very much. But what's coming up is in May, you're going to decide whether we're going to use herbicides or not. And I just don't see how you could possibly decide that we're going to do that. We're going to put it in our drinking water supply. What could be the possible rationale for that? We've heard from Mr. Whitford that he doesn't even think we should be using glyphosate in general in the county very much. So in the drinking water, isn't that 10 times worse, 100 times worse? Certainly no one wants to go down as being in favor of putting glyphosate in our drinking water or any other herbicides or pesticides. So again, as I've said several times in the past, it's okay with me if you take the weeds out, if you harvest them, take them out and remove them from the lake so that they don't go to the bottom and rot and produce a lot of nitrates. Remember, we told Hernandez that we didn't want lots of nitrates. They just disregarded that and said, well, we're going to recommend glyphosate anyway. So obviously, they're not environmentalists, are they? In fact, I don't think I'm particularly environmentalist. I'm sort of run-of-the-mill for people in this county. Most people agree with me. We don't want to poison our drinking water with herbicides. The idea that we may be talking about it is kind of beyond belief to me. So I will be meeting with Mr. Cummings and Mr. Long. And I hope you will all keep in mind, this is, I think, a more important decision than whether we build a new courthouse. Are we going to preserve our perfect drinking water in this county? Are we going to let these self-appointed steering committee on Patterson Lake dump it in for their own purposes, which is to create a boat lane for boats at least eight feet wide, which there's only about six of on the whole lake and this tax applies to 615 households. So it's completely self-serving. Not at all what they were saying they were going to do. What they were going to do was to help wildlife, help the lake, help beaver's eagles. No, no, we're going to kill the lily pads under the trestle. And remember, the trestle wasn't even included. It was left out. Mensah and Mahia apparently agreed with that. It should be left out. But now almost all the treatment is going to be right under the trestle. How could you be doing that? Wouldn't make any sense.
Okay, thank you. Terry Stanley Ballard, John Pettit on deck.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard. I reside in Tango Wild, which is unincorporated Thurston County. I handed out these, these to all five of these commissioners. This is because of you, not reacting to our homeless. The majority of life I served in the United States Army. Societies have standards and expectations. You have no standard as far as my concern of living, but to yourself. For societies to exist, they must have leadership, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and the personal courage to do what is right. I never use it as a punchline. Others do. The growth of homelessness in Thurston County, which includes the cities, is directly proportional to the lack of leadership demonstrated by the County Board of County Commissioners and the Thurston County Board of Health. It is their responsibility. It is said that the true measure of society is how it treats its most vulnerable members, such as children, the elderly, and the infirm. It is always the measure of humanity. In January of 2023, a 2022 report came out that added 120 more homeless to 792 total. In January 2024, a 2023 report added to 212 more people in Thurston County. And for me, it adds up to 1,000, 1,004 more homeless today. How many have been added in the 2024? We don't know that yet because all reports come out a year late. Thurston County has had and appears to continue to have an absolute lack of leadership unless it is the intent to continue to redefine our society, a level of third world status. More money thrown at the issue will do nothing to solve it without leadership. It is time to stop making meaningless proclamations and declarations and get to work. Time to go by Washington State Constitution, AGOs, and RCWs. Actions with results is a true measure of, of success of the failure of leadership. The jungle right behind this building is, is only a small example of Thurston County's failure to provide for local societies' health and welfare. Our veterans relief program also continues to follow the, follow those that have served their country. Are you proud of what you have made in our county? Do you even care with the 140 salary to, to represent the people as leaders of our, of our county? There are 952 people existing homeless where we have counted in Thurston County. There are 158 in transitional housing, 460 in emergency shelters, and 334 people living in encampments, tents, RVs, and other vehicles, small structures, doorways, and places not meant for habitation. The nonprofits have the homeless industry for the, have the homeless industry for the financial benefit of overpricing services and in overpaid salaries, which is, which is legal but not moral. I've seen you spend more than $10 million in one day. And that's equivalent to $10,000 per homeless person today. Okay, in a day. Where are the trained social services workers in the county, county's health department to oversee the homeless? And where is your leadership? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Pettit is up and then I think everybody else already had their opportunities to speak on the courthouse piece.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live on Rich Road. I get to see good old friends over here that we've had certain talks before about new courthouse facility. In fact, I think we might even have engaged in a debate at one point in time. But my concerns is not that we don't necessarily have needs. My concern is always, how are we going to pay for it? Which means there's been a variety of different plans in the past, how that's going to happen. At one point, somebody wanted to make a levee lid lift that would last for 30 or 25 years. Bad plan. More appropriately, we should follow models such as what school districts do or other municipalities. We take revenue bonds in order to create a regular tax directed to the benefit of the facility that you're trying to create. How much is it going to cost? We know, we know a simple high school is going to run $100 million plus. So it's easy to see we could be looking at 150, $200 million minimum for this project to locate it properly. We also need to be able to actually have a site approved through a process of an election that, because that's the way the state law dictates, is there has to be a location established. The current courthouse facility, it, it wasn't maintained as it should. And I always have to laugh a little bit when I see the one judge over here because we were standing in the lobby of a building three and suddenly the roof came down with a major leak on the floor. It was like, not little, it was like a huge amount of water. If you don't maintain something, it doesn't last. And if it's outdated, noted, noted that, for instance, it was built pre-internet. And gee, we've had a few people grow in the county since the time it was built. So, you know, I, while I, I have, I want everything to be very financially reasonable and affordable. I'm not saying that the people can't afford it. They can. It's, it's something that needs to be supported by a countywide proposition. It doesn't just get put on like the $50 million bond that was generated strictly under the payment of the unincorporated area through real estate excise tax. So it has to be justly divided properly. And when justly divided, it reduces the cost across the board for everyone. I do respect our judges. I think they have like the hardest job right now that we can have. Our society has declined in its respect. Building trust, and that is part of your proclamation, building trust is something that's not going to be an easy task because we're going to have to see it, not because someone says, oh, we're going to build trust, but we got to see it in the actions. The actions of the Board of Commissioners, county staff, everyone. And in general, I think we can do that. But it's going to take some work and it's going to take proof. Actions speak louder than words. And so why one might think I would be opposed. And so why one might think I would be opposed, there was one part which I want you to understand clearly. Us taxpayers out there, we are the unnamed stakeholders involved in this process. And if you think you're going to go anywhere without including the stakeholders, the ones that are going to pay for it, isn't going to happen. So best of luck. Engage, reach out to us, and we can see whether we can find a workable program that can make everyone happy.
Okay.
Chair, before we move on, I just wanted to note that we do have Mr. Ballard's handouts here. We've asked them to be submitted about two hours in advance of the meeting so that we can get them date stamped and scanned into the record. So we will date stamp and get them scanned into the record and then distribute them right after the meeting.
Okay, that's good. That's the end of my sign-up list, because Commissioner, we had Kristen, who said no, and Judge Buckley, Judge Skinder, based on the courthouse piece, and Ms. Doctor. So unless there's anyone else in the boardroom who did not get a chance to provide public comment, I'll go to the folks on Zoom. Okay. Someone will have to help me with names, because I can't read that far. Amy Poole, Amy Tool? What does this say? Top left, Amy.
Yes, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, you have four minutes if you'd like to provide public comment.
Yes, I'm not sure if I'm at the right place. I'm trying to see who I would reach out to. I have an issue going on with my apartment complex. I'm on Section 8 right now, and my apartment complex is pretty much taking my federal funds and not applying them to my account. And I have four children in the house that have been exposed to mold, and I had to pay out of pocket for a mold test to come to my house. I have a daughter that is severely with a weak immune system that was in the hospital in and out last week, and in and out of the doctor throughout the day yesterday and for the past week. She has ammonia, and I just got the mold test back. And I'm not sure the mold's that in there, but my landlord's refusing to fix them, and I really need some help here.
Okay, not sure that's, I mean, I'm not sure that's within the purview of the Board of County Commissioners.
Chair, we could have Tom Webster from our housing team reach out if she...
Could we get your contact, an email address or a phone number?
Just know that you'd be telling everyone on the internet your personal contact information.
We have it. We have it. Yeah, we have it.
We have, okay.
Okay, you want me to put it in the chat or mail it?
We already have it, so we'll have someone from housing follow up and try to get you directed in the right spot.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Karen Messmer, I believe, and I'm going by the picture, not because I can read the words. Ms. Messmer, would you like to give public comment?
Hello, I thought I was signed up for the 3:30 hearing.
Is that a different sign-up? We're not there yet.
You might be, but we're just going through public comment now.
Okay, I'm for the 3:30 hearing.
Okay, so if I'm going to, you're in the right place, you just have to hang tight. And if that's why you're here, as I go through the names, just let me know. This is for general public comment for the Board of County Commissioners, 2 o'clock meeting, Esther Cronenberg.
Right.
Did you want to give public comment, or are you here for the public hearing?
I'm here for the public hearing at 3:30.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messmer, calling Esther Cronenberg.
Yeah, hi. I'm not sure I'm supposed to be, I'm making comment about bar holdings. Is this the right place?
Not yet, 3:30.
At 3:30?
Yes.
Can I do it now, just because I won't be available at 3:30?
You can give public comment about anything in this particular moment, so yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm calling, I want to testify to urge you to reject the policy language proposed by the applicant for bar holdings for these reasons. One, the applicant used a legal sleight of hand to make it seem like the 2022 swap law applies this year because of the comprehensive plan update, but that's not true. Annual review means it's reviewed annually in any year. The 2024 law supersedes and strengthens the environmental protections of the 2022 law. I find it offensive that the developer is attempting to put the county in legal jeopardy for lawsuits by having you adopt this flawed policy language. Now, two, the county hydrologist's report on those properties found several aspects concerning. Because it's close to the Deschutes River, stormwater management from so much newly added impervious surfaces rushing into the river all at once could shorten the time rain has to infiltrate into the ground, negatively impacting stream flow. And the presence of nearby springs could accelerate contaminants from stormwater and spills into the river. And because it's so close to the river, it would be hard to monitor those leaks in time to do anything about it. And providing sewer service would only encourage further growth along Highway 99, producing even more impacts to in-stream flows and to our rural lands. Three, the land proposed to be swapped near Black Lake are barely buildable. There are steep slopes and wetlands and a utility corridor. The recharge potential for the Black Lake parcels aren't as high as bar holdings, so the county would lose valuable, critical recharge area. It's not equivalent swap. And who decided this was swappable land? The developer? If that's so, that's kind of outrageous, because the people and their representatives should be the ones who decide what their community will look like, not the person with the most money. We rely on groundwater. New York City bought 180,000 acres of a watershed that can never be developed to ensure it has a clean water supply. But this development proposes building over our watershed by allowing development outside the UGA and swapping it with less valuable recharge land. We can't afford to keep building on top of our aquifers. The UGA swap law is clear in that swap parcels must be equivalent. They can't result in increase in development capacity. This swap clearly does that. It also states revised UGA must not result in a net loss of critical aquifer recharge areas. It clearly does that, too. The Buildable Lands Report says we have enough land to build on for the next 20 years. Don't set a precedent of letting developers pick where they want to build to make the greatest profit without thinking of future consequences for the people. As our representatives, we count on you to protect the common good and not abet development at any cost. Please keep our rural lands rural and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Next, I can't read the name. To the right, Brenda Wilmoff? Brenda Wilmoff?
Oh, I'm here for the 3:30 meeting, but I did send a written comment yesterday, so that should be available for the Board of Commissioners to read.
Yes, we got written comment, thank you. We'll call you back at 3:30. Katerina Simons?
Hi, I'm here for both. I'm going to say that I support finding a way to get us a new courthouse. I served on a jury a couple of years ago now, I guess it'd be two years ago now, and the jury rooms were horrific. The conditions in general were awful, and we ended up having to do a, we ended up with a mistrial because two-thirds of the jury pool ended up getting COVID. We got exposed on our first day during selection, and then by the end of the week, two-thirds of the jury all had it because of those little teeny-tiny rooms. So I'm happy as a citizen, knowing that we have issues with backlogs and court availability and jail issues and everything, that is something that is moving forward again. I'm also here to oppose the bar holdings UGA swap. My main concern being the aquifer building on lands that we need. We need more trees, and we need water going into the aquifer system, and paving those over for the benefit of a particular developer as opposed to the well-being of the entire county's drinking water. It just doesn't serve the needs of the people. It only serves the profit of the particular developer. So I just wanted to encourage the Board to oppose that. Thank you.
Next, I have Al, is that Lori?
Yes.
Lori, I don't have your last name. Would you like to give public comment on something besides the 3:30 public hearing related to countywide planning policy change?
No, I don't want to testify at this time. I have no comment. I'm waiting for 3:30.
Very good. Jim Lazar? Are you here for the 3:30 public hearing?
Yes, 3:30.
Okay, thank you. We'll call you again. I think that concludes public comment.
Two more come on, Shannon Duncan.
Shannon Duncan, do you have testimony, or sorry, public comment to the Board not related to the public hearing at 3:30? You're on mute. Ma'am, you're muted, I cannot hear you.
I have comments for the bar holdings.
Okay, we'll call you again at 3:30.
Thank you very much.
Eric Wepler. Eric Wepler came on.
Wepler? Eric Wepler, are you here for the bar holdings, or it's not bar holdings, for the public hearing at 3:30? You're muted, I cannot hear you. Okay. I can't hear you, you're still muted. That's your feet. Okay. All right, we'll come back to you when we get to the public hearing. I'm assuming that's what you're here for. So that will conclude public comment for the Board of County Commissioners meeting, which is what we're still in the middle of. We have now County Manager's Update.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted to point out to the discussion earlier that it was not Commissioner Grant's initiation to have the item added to the agenda. So I just want to apologize if we took a misstep. But based on the conversation that took place, where a couple Commissioners felt ready to move forward with their planning commissioners, staff took away that Commissioner Grant was contemplating being ready if she could review the materials. So it was actually staff that circled around with Commissioner Grant to ask her if she was ready to have the item added, and it wasn't her pushing an agenda item forward. I just wanted to say that because as a new Commissioner, I know she doesn't want to overstep any bounds, but that wasn't, I just want to make sure that it was communicated as it happened. And then lastly, as we were making those changes, that's the reason why we had a bit of a late start, about 12 minutes late. Staff were working to get some of those items updated based on the agenda setting, and so we apologize for the late start. Just provide that bit of background. No other updates at this time.
Okay, we have consent items 3A, sorry, 5A through EE. Is there any request from a Board member to remove an item from consent? Is there a motion regarding the consent items?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in the amended agenda.
Motion is second to approve consent items 5A through EE, non-doubtable motion. I'll call for the vote. I want you to say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed. Motion carries. And we did not have any Department items today, so that takes us directly to Commissioner Reports. Let's do them, so we can then close the Board of County Commissioners meeting and move to our public hearing. Commissioner Mejia?
Have quite a few, so I'll try to shrink them down. I do apologize. But I guess since we do have a presence here of public, I will promote the fair board. So the 2025 fair dates and carnival updates. I want to give a huge shout out to Tomasina Cooper. So as the year added, the fair board was unsure on whether we were going to have a carnival or not this year. And Tomasina was able to negotiate with them, and she secured their services for this year. And not only did she secure the services for the fair, she also convinced them to have a wristband day, which many of you remember that was not an option last year. So other changes that are happening in the fair this year, we are moving from a five-day fair to a four-day fair. So it will go Thursday through Sunday, and it will be July 31st through August 3rd, 2025. And the mascot this year is a peacock, and the theme is "Boogie On Over to the Thurston County Fair." So as I'm looking at all these wonderful public members who have shown up for the 3:30 public hearing, I'm inviting you all down to the fair. The fair board is working hard. Now that the days are reduced, they have a lot of logistical issues to figure out, fitting the showings for the animals and getting the kids there. Market sale will be Saturday, and wristband day will be Friday. The fair board also reviewed an application for John Murphy, and they will be inviting John to the next fair board meeting and making the recommendation to the board. Also this year, just as a heads up, fair funding was cut from the governor's budget, and Tomasina has reached out to the Fair Association and asked for more information on this cut, as well as the potential impacts we may face, depending on what information comes back from the Fair Association. They might engage with the Washington State Association of Counties. And the fair board is excited to have a rotating Commissioner representation. Capital Lake update, I want to share that, some excellent news. The governor's proposed 2025 through 2027 capital budget includes a $25.5 million to complete design and permitting, so still a long road ahead, but great news overall. I will leave my Legislative Steering Committee updates for tomorrow, but there are a few updates of things that I need to give the Board. In terms of Thurston Regional Planning Council, I attended that. Commissioner Grant joined me for this meeting. We had a presentation on emergency detour routes and the current conditions report. This is a future study coming up, and why is this of interest to us? If they identify an I-5 detour route that uses one of our roads, and they determine that our facilities are insufficient to accommodate the traffic, that means bridges or intersections, then we'll use this study in upcoming grant applications. So several jurisdictions have requested that this be a priority, and so TRPC will be contracting this request out. And I did request for them to, especially on the communications side, to engage with our emergency services team. The, I attended BHASO, intercity transit, it's still ongoing negotiations, and they're going through the ERP services, so they chose a consultant for that. I attended several events. The state of the community, great job Commissioner Mensur. You did a great job representing us. Attended an Immigration Coalition meeting, the Stream Team 35th Anniversary and Volunteer Appreciation Party, intercity transit executive meeting, the FIFA World Cup 2025 announcement for the fan zones, Governor's Ball, National Association of Hispanic County Officials, SBSC, the reception, where they did this before the event, where they announced all of the students who got scholarships, as well as they identified jurisdictions that they gave awards to. I attended the NAACP, and then a program of work from the League of Women Voters, and that's them laying out their work for the rest of the year. Attended MLK events, both at Alsho and the New Life Baptist Church. And then testified this morning for Bill 1206, and then this afternoon, attended a community meeting for Build for Zero that was held here. Sorry.
I'd like to finish this meeting.
Okay. Okay. Attended the steady meeting, first one of the year, along with my peers, and there's basically introductions for the year and kind of an update on what everybody's doing in South Thurston County. After that, we held the South County Leadership Meeting, where we talked about this year's CDBG funding, as well as the Board of Health changes. Dr. Freihite came down and introduced herself to several of the South County leaders and shared with them the likelihood that they'll be given one seat on the Board of Health, and to talk amongst themselves about what that could look like. And then I was invited to join the Billy Frank Statue Committee, so I'll be participating in the Billy Frank Jr. Statue Committee meetings from now on. I'm pretty excited about that.
Sure. Let's see, for me, over the past week or so, I've been focusing on learning about different parts of our county offices and introducing myself to all of the new boards and commissions. I met with Superior Court, the Auditor's Office, Finance Staff, the Assessor's Office, Community Planning and Economic Development, and the Sheriff's Office to learn about their work and to introduce myself. Let's see. I also attended, well, I did this meeting, but it's not a Board or Commission, but State Advisory Council on Homelessness, which I'm a member of. The Board of Health, the TRPC, and then the Transportation Board. Also attended an orientation for the Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization. And I've met with some local reentry nonprofit leaders, planning commission members, a local business owner. And let's see, went to the Lake Management District meeting, participated in the Law and Justice Council meeting. And I will say from the Law and Justice Council, I wanted to bring back that it was exciting to see a demo from, the prosecutor has been leading a, has been leading an IT has been leading a, an IT and a data dashboard for looking at cases, and I'm really excited about what the beginnings, I mean, it's still in process, but I did have some questions. It'll be a new data tool, and it'll be available to everyone in the community to be able to use by the, you know, late spring. And I, I did bring up making sure that we are making sure that the regional court and arrest data is consistent across all of our agencies here. And so excited about that. I, what else? Completed all our mandatory trainings as a new employee, and went to the Washington State Association of Counties Legislative Session Update to get updated on local legislative priorities, and listened to the Housing Solutions Forum, attended the Governor's Ball, attended something yesterday for Martin Luther King, and then, and also was invited by sage leaders to join as a mentor for other people down the road. And that was my week.
Commissioner Claus?
Yes.
Thank you. I know all of us had a really busy two weeks. I'll try to make mine quick. I attended the Orca meeting on the eighth. I also attended the Chamber Forum on the eighth, the State of the Community with my seatmates. Let's see. Board of Health on the fourteenth, on the fifteenth, oh, on the fourteenth, I also attended the Washington Immigration Solidarity Network Policy Platform Training. On the fifteenth, I attended the Disability Board meeting. On the sixteenth, I attended the Law and Justice Council meeting. That was really informative. And we talked a lot about a new data dashboard that's coming to the county. It's not publicly available yet, but it will be an opportunity for the public to analyze the flow of different cases in the county that go through the court system. And I won't elaborate on it now because it's coming in the future, so I'll be talking about it again in the future, but that is something that's exciting, that's coming to our county. On the seventeenth, I also attended the steady meeting with my seatmates. I also held a stakeholder meeting with constituents who are interested in topics related to public safety in the county. I attended the Washington Association of Counties Legislative Update Meeting and the Regional Housing Council Executive Meeting to prepare for the Regional Housing Council Regular Meeting tomorrow. I also attended the Martin Luther King event at SPSCC. That was a really wonderful event. I attended the Martin Luther King event on the twentieth at New Life Baptist with my seatmates. And looks like that's it.
Thank you. I'll just quickly go through. Had the opportunity to speak on several occasions, including the Stream Team Volunteer Appreciation Event, the Chambers State of the Community Event, the Martin Luther King event at New Life Baptist Church yesterday, and the Martin Luther King event at Thurston Marshall Middle School in West Olympia, where they had Legacy Day on Friday. Also attended the Mayor's Meeting, the South Thurston Economic Development Initiative Meeting, West Olympia Business Association. YOM leaders took me on a tour of the city. The Public Works Director and the Planning Manager took me to show me all the different areas of growth and stations and capital projects, the wastewater treatment plant. Kind of hit it all on a tour of YOM last week. Went with Commissioner Mejia to Seattle for an informational meeting about the announcement of Olympia, Lacey, and Thurston County as a FIFA Seattle 26 Fan Zone in 2026, which we're all pretty excited about. And two sentencing guideline commission meetings. We meet very frequently outside of session on bills related to criminal sentencing. And attended the SPSCC lecture and scholarship event that Commissioner Claus and Commissioner Mejia referred to for Martin Luther King Day as well, with Dr. Jackson, Thelma Jackson, as keynote speaker. I think that about covers it. So with that, we're going to adjourn the County Commissioners meeting. We are going to begin our public hearing. Do we need five, or are we ready to go? It's like we're ready to go. We have a full house, so let's just get right to it. Look to the clerk of the board. Do I just keep going, or do we need a different recording or Zoom or any type? Okay, so wait for you to give me a heads up. Okay. Two minutes here. Okay, I'm not going to go with four minutes. It's, there's one.
I'm on the way back. She went to go get me a stylist.
Do you have any sense how many people online?
Thanks.
Ashley.
Do you have a few more chairs up here? If anybody wants a seat, a couple more chairs in the front? Anyone?
I promise you, we don't bite.
Speak for yourself.
Try.
It's not you. It's the front row.
Okay, you ready to go? Okay, so good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' public hearing regarding our countywide planning policies update. Purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on proposed updates to countywide planning policies. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. The commissioners have already been provided with all written comment received as of today. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select announcements of public hearings on the left-hand side if you're listening in. Information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify, but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Ashley Arrai, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, will provide background information on this topic and answer any preliminary questions from the board. Public comment will then go with the folks in person first, and then assuming folks on Zoom wish to testify, I will read your name aloud. Given that we have approximately sixty people signed up, which is probably the most I've seen in my time on the board, we're going to be limited to two minutes to testify, and I'm going to encourage you on top of that. A lot of times in these public hearings, you get to a point where folks are kind of repeating the same points. So please feel free to make reference to other points rather than restating them. If you have something new to say, by all means, you'll have your two minutes, but we do want to be respectful of everyone's time and get everyone heard. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the board, for the record, and we are going to open this public hearing and call Director Arrai forward to present background information on the proposal before us, summarizing high-level written comments submitted, and providing any additional information to board near requests. Thanks, Ashley.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I will try to keep this brief. It is a full house. First, I do want to thank everyone that took the time out of their busy schedules to join us today and engage in this public process. We are here to have a hearing on countywide planning policy updates. This is separate from the specific application that the board has placed on the docket for the bar holdings proposal, also known as Salish Landing. Countywide planning policies are a requirement for all jurisdictions planning under the Growth Management Act, and they essentially establish a regional framework for how we engage and coordinate with the cities here in Thurston County and our comprehensive planning efforts.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think they heard you.
Sorry, I usually talk really loud, so I will, is it, is it?
The microphone is for recording, so you need to speak up a little bit. The microphone is for what happens on the Zoom, not for this room.
Okay, I will do my best.
Yeah, we have an internal microphone system that will pick up, hopefully, for the folks in the room.
Okay, great. Thank you for that feedback.
Maybe the opening one more time.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Take two.
Ashley, I would just say probably go much louder than you think you need to, because there is a lot of audience here, and I see some folks who are putting their hand to their ear, so they may not, hearing may not it on normal volume, so just louder than you think you need to, outside voice.
Yeah. First, I want to thank everyone that took time out of their busy schedules to join us today and engage in our public process. The public hearing today is for an update to the countywide planning policies. There is a specific proposal that has been placed on the docket, which is called the Bar Holdings Project, Salish Landing Proposal. Both names apply. That is not what the public hearing is for today. The public hearing today is for the countywide planning policies. This is a requirement for all jurisdictions planning under the Growth Management Act to have this regional framework that establishes how the county coordinates with the cities in doing the comprehensive planning. I just want to walk folks through what the process looks like for updating our countywide planning policies. In this case, as in many cases, new state laws are passed, which necessitate us taking a look at updates to our countywide planning policies. Those new state laws go through a process of consultation with the planning directors of both the county as well as the cities, sort of mulling over what the appropriate path is for updating these countywide planning policies. They then get reviewed by the Urban Growth Management Committee, of which elected officials from all the different jurisdictions sit on. That is followed up by work sessions with our Board of County Commissioners here, as well as a public hearing, which you are all participating in. Once the public hearing closes, our board here is a, can take final action, whether that is after followed work sessions or whatnot, that will be up to them. Wrong way, I apologize. So what are the proposed updates today? So these are in response to changes in state law in two different categories. One is in response to updates regarding tribal coordination. So some of these updates address new policies that would emphasize collaboration to identify and protect cultural resources, recognize tribal sovereignty, as well as have greater cooperation on shared projects.
Nice.
Sorry, thank you. The other set of updates, which at least based on a lot of the comments I've read coming in, are regarding the new state laws around urban growth area land swaps. There have been two recent state laws passed, one in 2022 and one in 2024. The updates to the countywide planning policies are intended to address these laws and establish policies for regional coordination roles and responsibilities. And those roles and responsibilities are broken down by what the county would do versus what the cities do. It also includes standards for public noticing and engagement, because those are pieces that were not identified in those state laws.
Were you, were you done with that slide?
Yes.
So, because you didn't have the microphone earlier, just to be specific, or to be very clear, what we're talking about today in the public hearing, are those things right there and not a specific development proposal of any kind? Even though those things might affect lots of other development proposals, if anyone's here to talk about a specific development proposal, that's not necessarily what this hearing is about? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is true. Any specific development proposal will have multiple public hearings, starting with the Planning Commission. starting with the Planning Commission, before it even gets to the board for a public hearing. I'm, I know, I am trying to, it's not advancing.
There you go.
Oh, there it is, sorry. So this side is outdated, I think we're, we're well over sixty comments received, we have received comments in support of tribal coordination, few more comments in support of the UGA land swap policies, and then a number of comments regarding concerns with UGA land swap policies. We've also received a number of comments indicating that an environmental impact statement would be appropriate with the adoption of any, any of these countywide planning policy updates, rather than a determination of non-significance. Just notes for the board, as well as folks here, when we did some outreach to the state and legal counsel around the comments we received, we did get in writing from the Department of Commerce that in their minds, the 2024 UGA swap law does not supersede the 2022, and they indicated that both apply. We also looked into the recent case law that happened late last year, which assessed environmental impacts of a binding zoning change that called for an environmental impact statement. Countywide planning policies are kind of unique. State law basically says that they exist solely to establish a framework for future comprehensive plan development and are non-binding. Also want to highlight, as it pertains to environmental assessments, any individual application, including the Bar Holdings one, would require a separate environmental assessment. Any environmental assessment of updates to this regional planning framework would not have any bearing on that specific proposal.
Ashley, could you just kind of talk that through a little bit as it relates to what the action that's being taken in this specific application? Can you just provide those, that distinguishing component?
So the action that would be taken in updates to the countywide planning policies is really updating our regional coordination framework in response to the new state laws, not, not any decision about a specific proposal. That specific proposal would have to go through a lot of additional review, would have to go through a separate environmental review, public hearings with the Planning Commission, work sessions with the Planning Commission, and then following up on that, review by Urban Growth Management Subcommittee, input from the City of Tumwater, and review by the board.
Whatever city that UGA, so when you say regional coordination, you're saying that we're memorializing, that we want to make sure any, any growth man, or UGA swap, we involve the jurisdiction very closely in any decisions we made, is that what you're saying?
The, the new updates require regional coordination with the cities, and as it relates to the specific proposal that's on the docket, I outlined all of the different steps and review opportunities and public hearing opportunities.
And Ashley, can you, I think it's the case that state, Department of Commerce at the state level is working on rules as to how these 2022 and 2024 laws work, kind of more specifically, and they, I understand had a public hearing about that earlier this month, and that may inform, inform how projects that we would take on Thurston County would proceed.
Yeah, so the, the UGA swap laws were passed, and then the state is currently working on rulemaking. Hearing was held early January, the planned adoption of those rules is planned for April-May timeframe, and those may or may not impact, may or not impact regional coordination around UGA swaps.
And I'm just, I'm just guessing that some of the folks' comments that are here today may be germane to the work the state's doing on defining those laws and interpreting those laws in terms of how counties are supposed to apply them. Probably more closely, in my view, than, than what we're doing, but that's a matter of opinion, I guess.
Yes, I, I do know that a lot of folks that are here today have also participated in the rulemaking.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Ashley?
Yep.
So like, you know, I'm, I'm new to a lot of this, but the, the Growth Management Act was passed, what, like nineteen ninety-five or something like that, is it? I'm sure somebody in here knows. Nineteen ninety?
Ninety.
Okay. And at that point is when the, the, the UGAs were established, or shortly thereafter?
Eighty-three, eighty-four.
Eighty-three, eighty-four, the UGAs were established, and they, those exist so that cities can grow in a way that is, makes everybody happy, right? Or essentially, and you know, like, as, as a former mayor, just, I never really understood how the UGA was established, and maybe why it, that UGA would have been in a place, if, you know, development's supposed to occur here, that, there's, there's no chance for development to occur in the place where that UGA is established. It just, you know, and I look at some of the other cities and it's the same way. This is creating the framework for us to try to work with communities to make sure their UGAs are proper and usable, potentially, is that kind of the?
There are a number of different provisions in how UGA swaps get applied, but essentially, it's a framework, framework that allows the county to consult with the cities and, yeah, assess their current UGA, and see if changes would be necessitated under that, under those new state laws, or allowed for under those new state laws.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions for Ashley, we'll go directly to public comment. I'll call the person who's up, and I'll call the person who's on deck so they can kind of be ready to go. Two minutes, so keep track of time, and if you run out of time, you can always send an email with the rest of what you were going to say. I apologize that we have to cut this down a little bit, but I think, I want to make sure, what, what happens if you go for hours and hours is people start to leave and you actually cut down on public comment, so I don't want that to happen, I want to hear from everybody. Frank Kersel is my first one up, and Mike Brewer is on deck.
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Kersel, and I live ninety-five twenty Springer Lake Lane, so I'm out at the end of Ninety-third Avenue, and basically the back of my property butts up against Sheldon Road, and just so happens right on the other side of that road is where Salish Landing is supposed to go. So just to give you a perspective of where it's at, and I wanted to say that I'm in favor of that project, because there is no retail out at that end. There isn't, unless you want to buy gravel, unless you want to buy plants, okay, there is no retail out there, there's, you're driving into town, or I guess you could drive to the end of Ninety-third and get, you could get into the gas station refrigerator and, and get something out of there, but there is nothing out that way. And with, with growth, all you can, progress is inevitable, trying to do it responsibly is the thing, try to plan it as best you can, and that's controlled anarchy, but, but trying to control it a little bit. All you can hope for is having a solid organization that you're working with, which I know the individuals involved in those projects out there, so I'm all for that. And the other part of this is, out there, if you want urgent care of any type, you've got to call the fire department, because you're driving all the way into town for something like that also. So if you're going to plan on moving, I don't know, some kind of development, I think that is a significant improvement in that area, and really will help those citizens out there without having to drive the ten miles, or nine miles, or eight miles into town, or drive a long distance, and it'll also, you know, decrease the footprint just for, for environmental reasons with all the cars and traffic.
Thank you, time's up. Mike Brewer, Krista Grammon is on deck.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Brewer, I'm applicant proponent of Salish Landing, and I am here to show my support for adopting the countywide planning policies. Meeting the goals of sustainable Thurston requires strong leadership from the Board of Commissioners. We support adopting the proposed CWPPs, knowing they will build a solid foundation for which responsible growth can be managed. The required ILA between the county and its swap-specific municipal partners will ensure efficient coordination with clear expectations. Allowing consideration of proposed UGA swaps exemplifies smart governance, utilizing innovative and flexible tools to address dire community needs by optimizing your GMA plans in partnership with municipal partners such as the City of Tumwater. Considering the crippling realities of our local housing crisis jeopardizing responsible opportunities to approve, approve projects like Salish Landing would have a tragic consequence by reducing housing capacity, jeopardizing economic growth, and failing to reduce miles driven by our community. We're keenly aware that scrutiny falls upon decisions such as these that you as a Commissioner group are, are facing. We're here to partner with you and ensure the thorough evaluations are conducted to invoke confidence not just in process but outcome. This includes experts representing hydrogeologic, traffic, environmental, archeologic, legal, and other fields. For five years, we have been committed to open dialogue with staff and elected officials related to the project, and this is consistent with our team's previous endeavors in the community, including more than six decades of service to Thurston County. Please never forget the who truly is important. And most importantly, I want to personally recognize and encourage the adoption of CWPP changes, addressing the, the protection of tribal cultural resources, and recognize the right of Indian tribes to participate in the countywide planning policy adoption process. Protecting and celebrating Indigenous history must be the priority of mindful growth properties or policies. Doing so remains the paramount focus and commitment of Rob Rice and I in our pursuit of Salish Landing. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, we appreciate your tireless dedication to Thurston County's prosperity. Thank you.
You, Krista Grammon, Rob Rice on deck.
My name is Krista Grayman.
Grayman, okay.
And my address is nine nine four nine Hidden Lake Lane in Olympia, I'm right nearby where the developers are trying to push through their, their project, okay. I ask you to reject, reject the current proposed policy language. You heard this morning that the two thousand and twenty-two swap law and the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-four swap law have independent effects, and that there are two separate tracks, one for swaps during interim years, and one for swaps during updated years. I ask you to keep an open mind, because that message is coming from the same place where we got a determination of non-significance for the draft policy. A DNS is not consistent with the State Supreme Court law issued a few months ago in King County versus friends of sus, some, some Mamish, sorry, I'm from Michigan, I'm not used to pronouncing that word, okay. I also want to let you know that I have inside information from Commerce and no longer, and, and Commerce no longer adheres to that line of thinking regarding there being two different tracks. I just wanted to make sure you were aware that if you were to approve the policy language today, it would wind up being inconsistent with the rules that Commerce will be issuing. It really boils down to the meaning of the phrase "annual review." That's the phrase used by the two thousand and twenty-four swap law. If you read the Growth Management Act, it will become clear that the annual review means any type of change to the comprehensive plan during any year, updates, amendments, and so on. And when you read the bill summary for two thousand and twenty-four swap law, it says the same. Thanks for all your hard work. I know everyone is doing their best to make sense of a complex statutory scheme.
Thank you. Rob Rice with David Toyer on deck.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to testify, my name is Rob Rice, one eight six eight State Avenue Northeast. I've been a home builder in Thurston County for thirty-five to forty years now, and I'm also the applicant with Mike Brewer on the, the Bar Holding Salish Landing project. I'm not going to get into the issues on, on Salish Landing, there's going to be many opportunities in, in the future that you'll, there'll be time for public input and for agency review. As I develop properties throughout the county, some of these can take years to go through all of the environmental issues, and, and we know that that's coming, there's, there's a whole process to do that, but what I, what I encourage you to do now is to move forward in adopting the, the countywide policy planning, because without that, no, no swap could happen. And, and I think it's reality that down in, in the future, that there's going to be need for swaps. The, the legislature approved it, and it's, it's something that, that is, whether it be our project or future projects, these, these policies need to get reviewed and get put in place. So I encourage you to, to adopt the countywide planning policies, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Toyer with Chris Carlson on deck.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission, David Toyer, Toyer Strategic Advisors, Land Use Consulting Firm located in Everett, Washington. I just wanted to comment on the countywide planning policies today, I, I do work on the, the Bar Holdings proposal, but I think it's really important, and staff touched on this in their presentation, but the countywide planning policies are a requirement of GMA, and they're for you to establish framework for working with the cities. At the end of the day, when a urban growth boundary decision is made, it's a county decision only, exclusive to the county, and under the countywide planning policies, like, this framework is how you go through the consultation process of working with communities, which is also a requirement of GMA. So you have the responsibility to make the decision, but in the process of making the decision, you have to have consultation. What you're establishing with these countywide planning policies is what that consultation will look like, and that's really all this does. And as far as there being two different UGA swap policies, and how Commerce may interpret them, or how others may interpret them, at the end of the day, the policy as it's written today is agnostic as to whether it's a two thousand and twenty-two version of a swap, or a twenty twenty-four legislative version of, of the swap, it's just about how the process is to transpire between the county and the cities. It's a framework only, it's not a project approval. And I think Rob Rice shared pretty poignantly, I think there's a lot of places, I mean, even the county and the communities that I live close to, we've got some areas in, in my one community where we need a new school, and they don't really want to build it outside the urban growth boundary, and they can't find land inside the urban growth boundary that the school district can afford. But there's land that is undevelopable because it's unsourable in our community, and I'm sure that at some point, they would like the opportunity there to consider swapping that land out for land that they might be able to bring in, in order to be able to, to have a school. So this is greater than just the Bar Holdings proposal, and at the end of the day, you're really just establishing a framework for consultation, and it doesn't matter what type of swap it is, it's just that you have a framework for talking with your communities about swaps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Carlson with George Gunderson on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Chris Carlson, I'm with Hatton Godat Panter, we're assisting the Bar Holdings proposal. We're an engineering and surveying and planning firm that's been doing business in Thurston County for over sixty years. I'm a professional planner with over thirty-three years of experience, notably, I've worked for the City of Tumwater for over thirty of those years, so I'm very familiar with the City of Tumwater codes, the UGA codes that county has adopted, as well as the city and county comprehensive plans applicable to this particular area. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the revisions to the countywide planning policies being considered by the Commissioners due to the relatively new changes to state law. I echo David Toyer's, Rob Rice's, and Mike Brewer's comments, it's important to point out that the countywide planning policy changes before you would have to be adopted in order for the UGA swaps to move forward. That's a, that's a very, very important part, point. I think the, the changes in state law, being a planner for over thirty years, are brilliant. I was a snot cooking those kid out of college with a planning degree back in nineteen ninety, and so GMA was brand new, and now here we are thirty-five years later, and now we have a tool to use that we can look at areas of growth, different areas of the cities, and change the UGA boundaries using this land swap provision. And frankly, you know, there's areas in the UGAs, both Tumwater, Lacey, Olympia, all of them, that were put in place back in nineteen ninety, that, there's areas that frankly probably should have never been included in the UGA due to critical areas, lack of infrastructure, et cetera. So in closing, I urge you to, to support the countywide planning policies, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, I have George Gunderson with Anna Rumsey on- I have George Gunderson with Anna Rumsey on deck.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I want to thank you first for the involvement with the Native Americans. What you're doing today is marvelous because I remember when they didn't even have lights in the Squali Valley. And so I've been here since nineteen fifty-seven. From, I came from Chicago, and I found the land that was what I wanted, beautiful, and I've been seeing it deteriorate rapidly. I'm totally opposed to the urban swap, totally, because of the fact that you have to consider the environment, what's the one area and what's in another area. There might be trees, there might be swamps, there might be all sorts of variances, and the essence of our livelihood is the environment we live in, and we're slowly destroying it by cutting down, I live on, off of Ninety-third, I live at ninety-nine zero-six Heart Road, and that's right where we have the preserve that has just been, so to speak, developed, which to me is going backwards because this was a canopy of oxygen, oxygen. This was an area that preserved the well-being of all of us, and we destroyed it by cutting down every tree on that, was it seven hundred acres? Or a large area, and it's very unfortunate that we do this process. I think we need to change our planning ideas in a sense that we need to, if we're going to have a development, we should have a green belt. If we're going to have more houses, we need to have more green belts. We just can't do like they're saying, just build more. It's progress. It's, it's degrading us by doing what we're doing. Growing up in Chicago, I saw crime, I saw, it was a miserable life, and I came out here and I found freedom. We're destroying our freedom. You have to build the infrastructure before you build the houses. You, I've talked to Sepic people, they say they can't keep up. The lot is being overflowed, overflowed. I talked to fire commissioner. He said every development which is built today should have a sprinkler system, but because of the fact that they're so close together, it's like a bonfire.
Sir, I need your wrap-up.
I am? Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Finish your call, your sentence, but thank you. Next up is Anna Rumsey with Sedana Campbell on deck.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Rumsey. I live at eleven fourteen Tenth Avenue Southeast in Olympia. I oppose the proposed policy amendment because it will pave the way for bar holdings, which will be unfair to low-income people who will live in the apartments. They will have to try to work without access to bus service and no way to get to town by walking or biking. I work with low-income people. I have been without a home for a time. Gas is expensive, and so is owning a car and paying for repairs and maintenance. New housing needs to be built closer to town so people can use the bus or bike or wagon to work and to stores. Also, if you approve this policy, you are going to make things harder for low-income people in another way. We need more housing. This policy language will get in the way of building more housing. This policy language will resort in swaps that don't follow the UGA swap law. They will get stuck in lawsuits. No housing will get built. Meanwhile, developers who follow the law get put behind them in line. That pushes out the timeline on the legal developments. There are several problems with this policy. But at a bare minimum, you need to remove succession D from the proposed policy two point six. That will help a lot. That will make it so that it is clear that all swaps have to comply with the twenty twenty-four swap law. Thank you.
Thank you. Sedana Campbell. On deck is Isabella. What's her last name?
Hello, my name is Sedana Campbell. I'm a current eleventh grader at Tombwater High School and a Running Start student. I am also a resident of the Springer Lake Lane community, and my house is literally right across from where the proposed bar holdings development would be. People who live in a rural neighborhood are in that neighborhood because they don't want to be in the city. But the UGA swap law, which would, in section two point six D, which would cause an increase in the developmental land, it threatens rural neighborhoods and areas because if you can, because urban sprawl is a big problem. So if you're continuing to build cities out instead of upward, it encroaches on rural land and environmentally important land. That land is important to the environment, the animals who live there, and it is important because, um, sorry. The point I'm trying to make is that the language used in this draft policy is deceiving, and it shouldn't be approved and continued to be in the law because it hurts rural land in the neighborhood that I live in. If there's a mini-city right next to, not to mention all of the construction that would take place on this critical aquifer area that's right next to a river, and this is kind of a sidebar, but I have chickens, and we saw a great horned owl like tried to attack our chickens. It was kind of bad, but it's just proof that there's a lot of wildlife in that area and developing on land, which would happen if this language continues to be in the UGA swap law. It's hurtful to not only the environment but also us because rural land should stay rural. You don't want, you know, a city in your backyard which used to be a forest.
Okay. Thank you. Isabella, I take it. On deck is, I'm having this one up, Tania Tamra Nozana.
Good afternoon, esteemed board members, guests, and audience. My name's Isabella Martin, and I live at seven one oh eight Desprado Drive. I'm not an engineer. I've never worked in the conjunction industry, and I have no experience in this kind of policy. I'm simply a junior at Tombwater High School and a Running Start student at SPSCC, here to express my refusal of the draft UGA swap policy and deliver a message and comment from someone who is unable to be here. The proposed policy language provides an opportunity for developers to go around the law and disrespect the policies that protect our environment. These policies are supposed to protect the environment that is home to our native wildlife, vegetation, and protect our aquifers. These aquifers are highly likely to directly flow into the Deshues River, and it's a vital part of the local aquatic environment and larger aquatic environment in the, in Washington State. The land that developers in the future and currently, such as bar holdings, plan to build on are on top of critical aquifers that are vital to our water supply. If these developers are allowed to build on these lands and the UGA swap policy language is allowed to go through, it will allow them to damage the surrounding wildlife and consequently get rid of the beautiful land that we call Washington State. I'm asking the board and community to oppose this harmful, divisive, and exploitive language that will allow current and future developers to bypass the law. I'm also here to deliver a message from Terry Graves. I'm Terry Graves, and although I live in two two one Stanford Avenue in Carbonado, I'm an enrolled member of the Cowlets Indian Tribe. Our people have traveled these lands, trails, and waterways since time immemorial. I, as many of our members, oppose this policy language. This language would give developers a way to get around the law, and please don't pass this policy language. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charlotte Persons on deck.
Hello, my name is Tanya Nozawa, and I live at seven zero two three Barrington Drive in Tombwater. I oppose this policy change. I know that, I will now read a comment from someone who could not be here today. My name is Rob McHugh. I have lived in Sheldon Road since nineteen eighty-seven when we built our home. I oppose this policy change, which will open the door to bar holdings being built. We live in a rural setting, which would, which we would like it to remain. Our home is on ten acres. We are zoned at one house per five acres. We would like to subdivide the property into two five-acre parcels in the future. The bar holdings swap would pave over a critical aquifer recharge area extreme. This will impact wells throughout this area. The county requires any subdivision to show that the resulting two lots each have a portable water source, but when you pave over an aquifer recharging area, you are reducing availability of well water. This will cause an unconstitutional taking of our development, development rights because it may eliminate the portable water source on the second parcel. But the county's determination of nonsignificance for the proposed policy skipped over this issue completely and said not applicable to every question on the SEPA checklist. That is wrong. Please request a new SEPA checklist and a full environmental impact statement for this policy amendment, and please fix the policy itself so that it includes protections for groundwater. Right now, I've, it violates the swap law because it was written by the developers to get around the groundwater protections. You need to add language to the policy that says a revision, quote, "A revision shall not result in a net increase in a higher level classification of critical aquifer recharge area inside an urban growth area," unquote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charlotte Persons with Rhonda Larson Kramer on deck.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Persons, nine oh three Avenue Northeast, Olympia, Washington, and I'm representing Black Hills Audubon Society today along with Betsy Norton. We have some suggestions to improve the draft policies. First, we urge you to include a requirement that as part of the application for a UGA swap, the jurisdiction must do a detailed study and full environmental review of likely impacts consistent with the environmental impact statement review standards. Second, we ask you to add a requirement to use best available science in evaluating UGA swaps in order to analyze environmental impacts such as effects on protected species, use of groundwater, stormwater infrastructure, and surface level water rise. Using the best available science is also important to take into account predictable changes due to development and climate change. Please add a requirement that people living in affordable housing will have access to green space within a reasonable distance, and that they will have access to other services such as public transportation, schools, and commercial services. Also, as a matter of environmental justice, affordable housing should not be located near industrial buildings or processes with smell, noise, air, or water pollution. A major problem with the proposed policy is that it can be interpreted as allowing a gradual elimination of green belts and open spaces from UGAs. Please remove subsection D of section two point six. Otherwise, it violates the law. Finally, you can see other suggested specific language to add to the current draft of this policy in Black Hills Audubon Society's written comments that have already been submitted, and Betsy Norton will continue to explain our other suggestions.
Thank you. Rhonda Larson Kramer, Brett Clubb on deck.
Thank you. My name is Rhonda Larson Kramer. I live at eighteen fourteen East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. Please do not approve the proposed swap policy. I appreciate all the dedicated dedication that people are putting into getting more housing stock. That is certainly needed. But the law says that the swap law is supposed to be used when we still have enough space inside existing urban growth boundaries. In other words, you can simply build more housing inside the existing UGA. You don't need a swap to get more housing. There is no reason to create a policy that would gradually eliminate green belts and open space in our UGAs just because we think it will get us more housing stock. Subsection D of proposed policy two point six would gradually eliminate green belts. This is not helpful in the overall scheme of things. It is not healthy to eliminate open spaces and green belts from our urban areas. If we run out of buildable lands for housing, the Growth Management Act provides the answer: expand the UGA. UGA swaps are not the answer. In fact, they are not allowed when we have run out of space in the UGA. The only option in that scenario is to expand the UGA. One last thing, and this is sort of a side note. I hope that we don't think in order to get more affordable housing stock, we have to cut down trees on city lots to make room. That would hurt low-income people more than it'd help them because trees are natural air conditioners. Elders and babies cannot regulate temperatures well. Cutting down trees next to houses can cause heat stroke and death in vulnerable populations. Thanks for listening, and I hope you reject the proposed swap policy.
Brett Clubb, Doug, Doug Tumman on deck.
My name is Brett Clubb. I live at forty-one thirty-five Cooper Point Road Northwest in Olympia. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. The last time I stood before you all was during an epic snowstorm in two thousand eight. None of you were on the board. There were only three members at the time, but the issue was very similar. There was a zoning change that would have allowed forty houses to be built, built on a lot where, at the time, only one was allowed. And people came just like this, and just like today. The only people that were in favor of it were the ones that were going to make money off of it. Everyone else was opposed, and the board did the right thing, and they decided not to make that change, and I'm hoping they can do the same thing today. Let's be honest, the bills in twenty-two and twenty-four were written by and lobbied for by developers looking to make obscene profits building on land, which they were able to buy at rates for land outside the urban growth area, and then, you know, manipulate the system to get that into the urban growth area. So now that they, now that they bought the land pretty cheap, they're going to make a lot of money on it. It's the classic organized crime bait and switch, and I encourage you not to fall for To affirm this swap language will be to affirm what a lot of people already believe, that Thurston County government exists to perpetuate growth for profit's sake and not for the good of the people, the land, wildlife, and environmental health. These proposed changes should be rejected by this board, and an EIS process should be undertaken to more fully understand the ramifications of any changes to the rules. Thank you for this opportunity.
Doug Tumman with Chad Kramer on deck.
Hello, I'm Doug Tumman, and my address is eighteen seventeen East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. I appreciate the chance to provide some input into the proposed countywide planning policies. I do not think the policies are ready to be approved. They need work. A UGA is a defensive wall against sprawl and damaging development. It is a boundary that protects a lot of resources that also help keep development compact so the people living in it can save money on gas. UGAs are the foundation of all urban planning. Because of this, care must be taken when breaching that defensive wall. That includes doing an environmental impact statement for UGA swap policies. It is my understanding that the state Supreme Court recently ruled that an EIS is required for these types of situations, and that county staff are made aware of this decision. However, this apparently didn't happen in this case for some reason. Hopefully, the board will see fit to pull back the proposed policies today and rework them, and then have the EIS done on the reworked policy language. This helps people keep their transportation costs low and keep development compact. It's better for residents, salmon, and for climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, sorry, Chad Kramer with Dana Larson on deck.
Hi, my name is Chad Kramer. I live at eighteen fourteen East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. I am against the proposed policy. I want to break down the difference between the two thousand and twenty-two swap law and the two thousand and twenty-four swap law statutory provisions. Comprehensive plan changes can be big changes or little changes. Big changes are analogous to passage of a budget. Little changes are analogous to passage of a budget amendment. Big changes happen once a decade. Those are called updates. The little changes happen during interim years, and those are called amendments. Both are described in part of the Growth Management Act that I'll call one thirty subsection two for short. There's a third term that means big changes or little changes. That phrase is annual review. It means that on an annual basis, the jurisdiction is going to be considering changes to its comprehensive plan, either big or little changes. The term annual review appears in one ten subsection eight. So we've got- So we've got 110, 8, and 130 subsection 2. They both deal with big changes and little changes. And now, a third provision is 130 subsection 3. That's the subsection dealing solely with the big changes, the comprehensive plan updates. That's the subsection where the 2022 swap law sits. And it is for that reason that the 2022 swap law applies only to swaps that happen during the update years. It is a subsection that only applies to update years. In contrast, the 2024 swap law appears in 110 subsection 8. As I mentioned, that's the subsection that talks about annual reviews, which can mean big and little changes. It's an umbrella term. This is why the 2024 swap law applies to both big and little changes. It applies to all swaps during all years. Because the draft policy makes it sound like the 2024 swap law doesn't apply during update years, the policy doesn't comply with the law. Please fix this by removing subsection D of Draft Policy 2.6. Thank you for your time.
Dana Larson, Bonnie Blessing on deck.
My name's Dana Larson. I recently moved to Montesano, but I've lived my whole life and worked my whole life in Thurston County. I also used to own property adjacent to Bar Holdings. My address is 808 East Simpson Ave., Montesano. I am against the draft policy with the exception of the part that has to do with the tribes. Let's tackle the housing crisis with real solutions, not proposals that can't help. Sometimes we see a bright shiny object, and it seems really good, but it's necessary to step back and ask if it's in our best interest. When something doesn't follow the law, all sorts of unintended consequences follow. The draft policy language, especially section D of Policy 2.6, is that type of thing. I think it is helpful to note that the developer's wife is a lobbyist for the building industry and may very well have had a hand in bringing the swap law to life. The same thing seems to have happened on the draft policy. It came from the developers. This swap law is hard to use and so limited in its applicability that it might as well not exist. It seems like it began as a solution in search of a problem. I also don't think this county wants to become known as the county that killed green belts. Long-term, you know that's what's going to happen. UGAs are one big welcome mat to anyone wanting to make a buck on developing land, but UGAs have critical areas and unbuildable lands. If developers could get rid of those, there would be all that much more land to develop. So you can see where this idea for the draft policy came from. The public does not want UGAs that are one big parking lot. Let's move on from this bright shiny object and get to work on building houses. There's plenty of land inside the current UGA boundaries for that. Thank you.
Bonnie Blessing with Mary Bernstein on deck.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Blessing. I live in the headwaters of Beatty Creek and Stony Creek. There's one answer that is clear, understandable, perfect, and maybe wrong. There's RCW 3670A011 says rural lands are more likely to have fish and wildlife, begging the question what to do when the fish and wildlife are in those places. Our UGA is literally covered with, it has swamps, it has a lot of listed species, and I appreciate all the work you've all done on the HCP over the years, but there may be a time to swap out properties that have those listed species with properties outside the UGA and protect listed species inside the UGA, even though this is different. This is very unusual for a jurisdiction and a UGA to deal with, to have like all these listed species there. But I feel that this is worth passing because I think we need to be able to discuss land swaps, UGA land swaps, and rezoning is worth betting heads over to protect our nation's states and local heritage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Bernstein on deck, Loretta Sepinen. Would you like to provide comment?
If possible.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you Ms. Bernstein?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
A life, I'm afraid.
I will get to you.
Oh.
I'm going in order. I didn't recognize you with your mask. No, I'll get to you.
Thank you.
I'll make sure your name's on the list.
Did you say Merrill Bernstein?
Mary Bernstein.
Merrill.
Merrill, okay.
Well, I'm one of the last people to sign up, so I thought I'd be like number 59. I wasn't ready.
Some people turned over the sheet number one, so sorry about that, but I'm going in. I've got an order.
All right.
It may not be the right order, but.
Okay. Merrill Bernstein, I live at 143rd Avenue, Tenino.
Okay.
Okay, so make it quick. There's at least three people after Brett, I think. Well, Brett, there's, and then they spoke eloquently to all the details that I would have spoken to, so I will save time. But I will say, as far as, I've lived in that area now over 20 years, and I will say that when I dug my well, I have a small residential house. The Department of Ecology, there was some talk about them limiting the well depth or the number of wells or the gallons per minute, and that was 20 years ago, based on the fact that the aquifers were not recharging to keep up with demand. So I wanted to raise that issue because, of course, the more development based on, you know, land swaps, et cetera, critical areas. So the SEPA's are absolutely necessary without a doubt, top of the list, SEPA's necessary. I just push them for that, and thank you. And again, definitely did at least the last four people that had all those great details and spoke to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go to Loretta Sepinen with Phyllis Farrell on deck.
Phyllis had to leave.
Okay.
I'm Loretta Sepinen. I'm a resident of Olympia, Washington. I first want to say I support the tribal position that are in our countywide planning policies. They're recognizing tribal sovereignty, and that's very important. And I really appreciate that through making this policy change, the county, the cities, and the tribes together are committing to protect something that the tribes asked to have in there, so it's the first time it's in there, to together protect rivers, fish passage, and habitat, fish habitat. I urge you not to move forward on the other part of the countywide planning policies. What's missing in them in particular right now is a way of protecting the rural lands that many people here have spoken about. I'm living in the city. I like that kind of lifestyle, but I am so inspired by what the people in this room have talked about in terms of the environmental benefit of our rural land, the quality of life of our rural land, and I want to mention the importance of our rural industries. And it is our job as a county to be protecting those, and we haven't done the protection work in this countywide policies. The cities did a really good job of talking about their interests as we negotiate UGA swap, but we haven't done our part on the county side to have language in there. Doing an environmental assessment is one way of protecting it. That's what I proposed to you in writing. There may be others. I urge you to spend more time considering how that half of the equation in any possible UGA swap in the future is protected while we consider the real need to possibly bump out our UGA boundaries in a certain area because of development within the UGA. Thank you very much.
So Gordon White then with Terry Patton on deck.
Okay, I'm guilty. I'm Gordon White, live in Olympia, Washington, to share a comment on UGA policies. I'm guilty because I was described at Thurston County, a cartographer who drew the line back in '83, '84 for the original UGA in North County. So I'm going to comment on those by strongly supporting the amendments providing for consultation with the Indian tribes and nations. First of all, let me thank you for the good work you do and all the work you've been doing for citizens of Thurston County. I appreciate your clear commitment to the public good. It feels good to see an executive governing body, an executive governing body, that is committed to the public interest. Just to look at your agenda today, oh my gosh, you're so busy and responsible in having carried it out, and you have great staff. And I can point out many others who are there here. So regarding the UGA swaps, swap policies before you today, I appreciate the good work of Director Arrai and Chief Tier Operations Coordinator Bowen to facilitate the conversations with the planning directors and working with the UGA management committee of the TRPC sponsor. Really appreciate the hard work there. I do not feel these policies are quite ready to be, are not quite complete. There's a lack of consideration for how a change in UGA boundaries will impact critical areas like drinking water aquifers, rural and agricultural areas. I also disagree with the decision that somehow not doing State Environmental Policy Act review on these policies isn't needed at this time because without having it done and disclosing the impact of these policies, it's not just a mere framework for conversation. They decide how the boundary will be drawn and how resources might be impacted. And you don't know what those impacts of today's decision or whenever you adopt these, you adopt them, might play out. And so, and you're required to by the State Environmental Policy Act. After I left Thurston County, I went to the Department of Ecology, and I used to give advice on how to implement the State Environmental Policy Act to local governments. I'll stop there. Thanks. This is full of.
All right, Terry Patton, Tammy Tonder on deck.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Terry Patton. I live at 4316 Satsup Court, Southeast in River Park. And I was a forester for DNR and State Parks as their chief of natural resource management for 15 years before I retired. I'm in favor of leaving the Bar Holdings in forest production. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Tonder with Eric on deck. Go ahead.
Keep to what I wrote here, just to stay focused. I am Tammy Tonder, and I live in the Springer Lake community, and I oppose the proposed UGA policy or the part that's on the environmental part. My land abuts 93rd Avenue not far from the intersection of Old Highway 99. Rhonda and I recently were excited to find native prairie wildflower species growing in my field, and then we found them all around the intersection of Old 99 and 93rd where the Bar Holdings is. We even found yerba buena at the stop sign on the shoulder of Sheldon Road at the Bar Holdings property. We attribute this to the existence of the Cowlets Trail on that parcel since yerba buena was a medicinal herb that presumably Native Americans planted along the Cowlets Trail. I tell you this because I want you to be aware of the history of this area. The Bar Holdings parcel was likely prairie land maintained as agricultural crops by Native Americans using cultural burning. Bar Holdings is not just a wildlife corridor. It is also a historic property that deserves preservation, not only because it is a critical aquifer recharge extreme area, but also because of its importance to our shared history. The Cowlets Trail was also the Oregon Trail. And I also want to say that the residents of the nearby Springer Lake community where I live are on private wells. Covering up the entire critical aquifer recharge extreme area, Bar Holdings, is alarming and concerning to our water supply. The policy language you will be deciding on today would open the door to developing this precious piece of land. The current proposed language of this policy is missing the important environmental intent of the law of the critical areas. It is backwards and careless to rezone areas before going through a full environmental impact statement. So please decline to adopt the policy. It is not a legal policy. Thank you. Oh, and I did have, just for people, I don't know if I can see. Get this.
Took you into the clerk, and we shall distribute it. Thank you.
I have this from AWC about the two land swap bills and what they think, and that's the American, or the Washington Association of Cities, and then here's just like the basics of the growth management.
Eric Tonder is next with Sharon Coons on deck.
Hi, I'm Eric Tonder. I live at 9330 Springer Lake Lane, and I have some of the same concerns, issues that have already been brought up, so I'm not going to repeat all that. But I would also ask to have you not approve the proposed swap policy. Thanks.
Thank you. Sharon Coons, Michael Cade on deck.
Sharon Coons, 12417 Tilly Road South. My first comment was about, I think it might have been Mr. Toyer, who said that, he said that the framework details aren't important as long as they're there, but the frameworks are what allow the projects and such projects as Bar Holdings, which a lot of people are talking about today, would be allowed, which I find alarming. My second issue would be about piecemealing. Piecemealing, doing one project at a time without an entire EIS, is against SEPA policy, which is important, and that's what people are talking about here when they're saying that we need an EIS for what's going on here. My third issue may seem a little outside of the ordinary, but I don't think so. There are so many people who check on their applications, not applicable, not applicable, and yet the county staff accepts them. And this happened, I don't know, most of you weren't around, in 2019, perhaps Mr. Mensah remembers, when we got, when North Point bought Rocky Prairie from the port of Tacoma, and they filled out this entire application. They were going to build a huge logistics center there with 4,000 cars a day and trucks a day and trains and everything, and they checked not applicable to just virtually everything on the EIS checklist. And the staff accepted that application, and I hope that our staff will, our county staff will get so that they don't accept that anymore and that our builders won't try that anymore because if they don't know that those things, of course, have an effect, then they shouldn't be building in our county. So that would be the end of my statement. Thank you.
Michael Cade on deck is Gretchen.
Thank you, Michael Cade. My formal address is 3526 Holiday Drive, Southeast. The executive director of the Thurston Economic Development Council. I address there as 4222067 Southeast, Lacey. Couple of things that I wanted to mention to you. You've heard a lot of comments tonight, and I'm going to defer to those. I think the most succinct comment, and I know you're not supposed to editorialize of individuals who spoke before you, but Mr. Carlson's testimony was some of the best I've ever heard, and I'm going to let my comments reside with him and double down on what he had to say. Thank you for your contextual conversation and questions that you had of the staff to help frame our comments and conversation today. One of the things that I found interesting was I thought I had signed up on the first sheet, and I realized I was actually the fourth sheet, so I had a lot of time to think about it. I think about the UGA hearings I've been in or during my career, I've given about 100 or so comments about the Growth Management Act in Washington State. One of the things I truly enjoy about the work that I get to do is that I work for an organization that truly supports the state's Growth Management Act. We want it to be successful, and we want it to be proactive. We want it to be in keeping with the community. As you think about the land swap and what it can do for this community, I would encourage you to pass forward on that and keep it in keeping and allow the staff, your staff, to do the work. You have a very dedicated and professional staff, and I think the work that they can do and will do for you on that is very good. So I do want to thank you for your time, commissioners. This is not an easy job. There's a lot of conversation here. I want to thank you for your time and attention, and I do want to thank you for moving positively forward on the land swap. Thank you. And I'll provide my formal comments to the clerk as well, so you have those as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gretchen, and then Kyle Kronk on deck.
Stay. Been trying to train it for 40 years, and it won't stay. Good afternoon. My name is Gretchen Bork, B-O-R-C-K. My address is 2410 12th Avenue, Southeast Olympia. I've lived in Thurston County since 2007, and I am a constituent of this county. The 2024 swap law is not a good policy for your constituents in Thurston County. It is a bad policy and should be rejected on several levels. There are many problems with it, but the worst of all is subsection D of the Policy 2.6. That misleads one to believe that the 2024 swap law does not apply That misleads one to believe that the 2024 swap law does not apply to swaps that happen during comprehensive plan update years. It's not just how the 2024 swap law reads. The RCW talks about annual reviews and there are any changes during the year. It doesn't just apply to swaps during the year when jurisdictions are not updated in their comprehensive plans. I also want to point out that you should question and not believe the developers on face value when they tell you that there will be affordable housing in the Bar Housing Development. As an example, they have zero track record of building affordable housing. Your constituents also have no guarantee that there will even be a YMCA or a grocery store. Developers can do anything they want after they convince you to put their parcel into urban growth area. They don't have to follow through on anything that they've promised. The same is true for their promise of housing, even market rate housing. There is no guarantee for your constituents. It seems odd that the county is putting so many resources into something that has no protections for the county or for your constituents. If the county wants affordable housing, why doesn't the county require the developers to sign an agreement stating so? The developers truly meant what they said. They would willingly sign such an agreement. Maybe the county wants housing of any type. I get that. We hear the term housing crisis all the time. But policy language that runs foul of law in so many ways does not seem like a good approach. If you want a development to get built for your constituents, please look at the state law, not the developer's suggested language. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Kyle Kronk. And on deck is Betsy Norton.
Good afternoon. My name's Kyle Kronk. I live in Olympia, Washington. And Michael Cade said it best when he talked about supporting, I am encouraging you to support the current plan, especially the tribal collaboration and the swap law. And I'll let Michael's comments kind of carry over. He's done a lot of these before and I am in favor of this, so I encourage you to move forward. Thank you.
Betsy Norton with Cindy Cooper on deck.
Hi. My name's Betsy Norton. I live on Evergreen Park Drive Southwest in Olympia. And I'm here with Charlotte as a member of the Black Hills Audubon Conservation Committee to comment on the draft changes in the countywide planning policies. We've submitted detailed recommendations online for your review and for the public record, so I'm going to just summarize a couple of high points here. The draft rules don't meet the requirements for UGA swaps specified in the Growth Management Act as amended in June of 2024. We urge you to make those changes. The draft rules do not reference the GMA demand for green space in urban environments. We urge you to add that in. The draft rules only weekly reference wildlife habitat and climate change. We recommend integrating conservation of wildlife habitat and applying climate change considerations throughout the assessments and planning processes. The draft rules limit the scope of surface water management goals largely to salmon, which overlooks the other hundreds of species dependent on surface waters in the county. We recommend broadly scoping surface water management for all water bodies, all species and all ecosystems related to them in the county. We believe our recommended changes will help the county conserve contiguous habitat in rural areas, ensure UGAs preserve sufficient land for green belts and open spaces, and protect precious aquifers and surface waters from contamination and depletion throughout the county. Conserve habitats and properly manage public resources, benefit wildlife and human residents, and improve our resilience to the impacts of climate change. We urge you to read our written statement for details. And I would just add here that NOAA, NASA, and Copernicus from the EU all announced just 11 days ago that we've reached 1.5 degrees centigrade in global warming. This is not a time to sit back and do what you've already done. We need to move forward. Okay?
Cindy Cooper, Eric Johansson on deck.
Hello, thank you. I'm Cindy Cooper. I'm a longtime resident of Thurston County and for the last 14 years, I've lived at 1085 Ebbets Drive in Tumwater. I want to be on record as opposed to urban growth area land swaps in general. As an example, the proposed swap involving Bar Holdings land would negate the intent of the UGA, which is to contain sprawl, to preserve rural areas, and to preserve farmland. I'm opposed to land swaps that would seem to only benefit the developer and not the people of Thurston County or Tumwater, as you've heard others say here today. And lastly, I'm opposed to a UGA land swap, particularly if it's going to pave over one of the last remaining unpaved pieces of the 9,000-year-old Kowlet's Trail. Also, a significant piece of wildlife corridor that remains outside of the UGA. This would seem like a very negative impact. And so I'm opposed to all UGA land swaps. And I thank you for your time.
Eric Johansson with Diane King on deck.
Good afternoon. I have to say, I've been really impressed with the way you've handled things and congratulations. And I appreciate you trying to move through it in an expeditious fashion. From what I understand, you're dealing with two issues here. One to do with tribal consultation. Anything you can do to improve consultation with the tribes, I think is excellent. Please go forward. The other is to work on your land swap policy. I oppose land swaps in general and this policy in particular sounds like it needs a lot of work. If you've got two different laws plus potentially rules that have to be written by a state agency and you're trying to figure out, okay, what do we need to do? Maybe what you need to do is pull back and wait until the state agency has done their work and then come back and revisit this. I'm not saying there is no room for land swaps. Certainly, there may be justification. But the little I've been able to find out about the land swap that's been mentioned, it sounds like this is a farce, to put it politely. Thank you.
Diane King.
I live at, I'm Diane King and I live at 4325 Sinclair Loop in Lacey. And I'm against the policy language. I think we all can agree that we need more housing and that's why I'm asking you to fix this policy. This policy will result in less housing, taking away your time and energy from viable developments and putting the focus on proposals that can't work. The swap law is not very user-friendly. Further, Futurewise said that by law, you can do a UGA swap only if there is no need to expand the urban growth area to accommodate necessary growth. Further, Futurewise said that it has worked on several proposed swaps in the state and has not yet seen one that complies with the two swap laws. I'd like the commission to consider the possibility that when a developer writes the policy language, it may not be written in a way that fits the law or the public interest. If you're going to vote on policy language, it might be better asking the planning staff to create that language instead of using what developers created. Planning staff is there for this kind of thing. I understand that this policy kind of skipped over the planning staff. They got it eventually, but then the concepts were baked in. Whoever is creating something from scratch is the one who gets to frame it. So when the developers created it, they framed the issues in a certain way. And it's pretty hard for anyone not to get influenced by how they presented themselves. If planning staff has been the ones to create it from the scratch, they would have gotten the opportunity to frame it. And I think that's where the process got sidetracked. So the most important thing is to get rid of that subsection D of policy 2.6. Thank you, guys.
I had a gentleman who asked not to testify, Tim Happeney still, case doesn't want to testify, so I'll go to Warren Berg with Karen Berg on deck. Is Warren Berg still present?
I'm Warren Berg and I live in 434 100th Avenue, Southeast Olympia. I'm a direct descendant of the Esqali Chief Lashai. My words are not necessarily reflective of the Esqali tribe position. I oppose the policy amendment. The other day, we celebrated Martin Luther King's birthday. And I want to touch on this issue of equality. In this policy proposal, it is directly related to parcels 33 acres of forest land and a couple of hundred feet of the Deschutes River. The parcel in this traditional lands of the Esqali people, after the Medusque tree, the first person to have purchased the property was William Mitchell. 11 years before he bought it, he was the Thurston County Sheriff Deputy, who kicked the pin off the trapdoor on the gallows who hung Chief Lashai, who was later exonerated. Mitchell later bragged that he had sent him to the happy hunting grounds. In January 2018, two developers formed the LLC called Bar Holdings and bought the 33 acres for $400,000. It was so cheap because of under the current zoning, only six houses can be built there. In late 2021, the developers submitted the first application, asked to expand the UGA and rezone it to a light industrial. The county let it, the item be on the docket even through the Growth Management Act, though the Growth Management Act doesn't allow expansion of the Tumwater UGA because it has enough buildable lands in it already. In November 2022, one of the developers learned that the Kowlet's Trail runs across the parcel that would be paved over by the proposal. He then asked the Squaxon Tribal Chairman to lend property, public support for the proposal. Developers started calling the project "salish landing." And I'll hand this over to my wife.
Okay, thank you. We have Karen Berg. And then Elizabeth McNaggy.
Karen Berg, same address, 434 100th Avenue, Southeast. Our family has lived here since 1908 on this piece of property. And for four generations, we have tried to be good stewards of the land, both culturally and environmentally. The county hydrology report on Bar Holdings proposal noted that the development would impact in-stream flows to the Deschutes River. The Washington Department of Ecology rates the river as high risk in terms of not having enough water for healthy salmon runs. The hydrology report also noted that the development would create development pressure on nearby parcels, creating more impacts to in-stream flows in the future. Both the 2022 and the 2024 UGA swap laws prohibit swaps that create development pressure on the rural and natural resource lands. And going back to the issue of treaty rights, while the bold decision does not explicitly grant the right to in-stream flows, its principles strongly support the argument that such flows are necessary to fulfill the treaty obligations to protect fish habitats. I'd also like to touch a little bit on affordable housing. The developers have said that the development will include affordable housing. And at other times, they've said that they've called it attainable housing, which is housing that's more expensive. This area has no transit service, so people living there would have to have a car. It is too far away from anywhere to be bikeable or walkable for jobs or services. Putting housing so far from the transit and people's jobs burdens low-income people. Building a development that impacts salmon runs burdens treaty rights. And paving one of the last remnants of the Kowlet's Trail while calling it "salish landing" really disrespects history.
Need to ask you to wrap up, ma'am.
So again, we oppose the policy amendment.
Next, I have Elizabeth McNaggy with, on deck, George Graiman.
Good afternoon. My name's Elizabeth McNaggy and I thank you for all your work on this. I reside at 10215 Hidden Lake Lane, Southeast in unincorporated Thurston County and have lived there for 25 years. I oppose the adoption of the draft policy and ask that you consider amendments that make the policy consistent with the 2024 swap law, require an environmental impact statement, as others have commented on, and address groundwater protection. As you know, there are two swap laws, 2022 and 2024, and they are similar, but the 2024 law added stronger protections for the environment, farmlands, and groundwater. That's why this is so important to us. The legislature was very clear that the 2024 swap law applies to all swaps in all years. I will just reinforce what others have said, that the law is clear that annual review is an umbrella term that means any type of change during any year, whether that change is an amendment or an update. At a minimum, the draft policy on swaps creates confusion because it creates two different types of swaps, those that fall under the 22 swap law and those that fall under the 2024 swap law. That simply doesn't make sense because it sets up a situation where a developer can simply wait until an update year and argue that only the 2022 law applies because the county policies appear to state that. One of the principles of statutory construction is that the legislature does not engage in unnecessary or meaningless acts. I'm concerned that the county's interpretation of the swap laws in your policy makes the 2024 swap law meaningless because no developer would apply for a swap when the county is considering the 2024 swap law in effect. Why apply when you believe that you can get an easier pass under years when the 2022 law is effective?
Need to ask you to wrap up, sorry.
I'll wrap up by simply saying the swap during any year must comply with the 2024 swap law and I ask you to consider amending your policy to make that clear. Thanks.
George Graiman. George Graiman?
How's it going? My name's George Graiman. I'm against it. Everybody here has said it a lot better than I could say it. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Aaron Borden with Michelle Peterson on deck.
Okay. Appreciate you letting me come and speak today. I'm a local resident. I live at 4308 90th Way, not very far from the project. And I care deeply about the future of our neighborhood. And it is very hard to find housing in that area. It's very important. It's very important to have places where we can be all active and we can connect, and we have to bring out the area to develop it out so that there is more usable spaces in that area. It's funny because I hear all these people talk about they need housing and the need for housing, and I agree that the need for housing is there. But they don't want it in their house. They don't want it in their local area. They don't want to be the ones to have it in their area. They say that they can have it in some other places. People try to put it in those other places, and they don't have affordable options for that because of certain factors for developments. And I think that this area is a very, very, very good place for putting out a different type of developing with commercial space, with apartments, with residential homes, and with a YMCA center. It sounds like some people are questioning if that's going to happen or not. I don't think that you can just say, oh, I don't think it's going to happen because I don't trust the developer. But at the same point, then who's going to do stuff like that? We need those resources out there in that area for families. We need those resources out there for people. The development is coming. It needs to be done. I think that's the most important factor here. And it just seems to me like nobody wants it near their house, and they think that these developers are making this huge killing off of this. And I don't necessarily think that's the case. But obviously, it seems like, after watching today, I'm in the minority on that opinion. But it also seems that they're talking about these laws that I believe were written by the actual public works. You know, the people at the county were actually writing these swap laws, and the director, I believe, wrote these laws. And so I don't think that the swap law was written by a developer. I don't think that, you know, I see, I hear a lot of things, and I'm a little bit frustrated right now because it seems like all these people are up here talking about certain laws. Or it sounds like there's a whole bunch of attorneys in the audience, when I don't think there's one attorney in here. And I just, I just don't think that, and this is my opinion, and it sounds like I'm in the minority on this, but it doesn't seem like these people really, really want the development to actually happen near their house, but they love to have it somewhere else. We need the housing, guys. We need the housing. And it's going to happen by your house, or it's going to happen somewhere else where it's not convenient for you, or it makes it so it's just, it's not... It just really, really seems, and I'm frustrated right now because I had a whole different set of things I was going to talk about today, and hearing all this opposition for these people, from these people that unfortunately doesn't seem like they know what they're talking about. They just know that they don't want it near their house.
Need you to wrap up, sir.
Yeah, but it's what it seems like they're saying to me.
Okay, thank you. Michelle Peterson is up. Alex Kramer on deck.
Hello, thanks for having us. My name is Michelle Peterson. I live at Hawthorne and North Street in Olympia, and I've had multiple generations in this town. Please do not pass this policy as is. I'm going to repute what Futurewise said in its written comments briefly. First, the county should commit to consulting with the Indian tribes and nations as you are intending to do so. Second, the UGA swap law is more work than it's worth. The county should just drop attempts to conduct UGA swaps. They can be done only when there is no need to expand the UGA to accommodate necessary growth, so that limits their use. Futurewise also has worked on several proposed swaps and has yet to see one that complies with the swap laws. Third, proposed policy 2.6A states that the county or a city or town can determine if a swap is appropriate, but the swap law says that the county must make this determination. And it makes sense to be consulting and to be united with the town or cities, but they can't be the only ones alone making this call. So the county must be involved. That's a crucial point. Fourth, proposed policy 2.6 needs to have provisions adding regarding critical areas. The requirement that the land added to the UGA is generally free of critical areas is an important requirement in the swap law. It's what results in the land being able to be used for urban growth. Fifth, the policy also is missing language saying that the land added to the UGA must be suitable for urban growth. That is the swap law. Sixth, lastly, the proposed policy is missing elements required by the Growth Management Act of 1990 generally. It needs provisions regarding public participation, a prohibition against expanding UGAs into floodplains, a requirement to consult with federally recognized Indian tribes, a requirement to do so, and other GMA elements. There are a lot of things that need to be fixed. Please do not pass this policy as is. We have time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Kramer. Margaret Fleming on deck.
Hi, my name is Alex Kramer. I live on 1814 East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. Thank you for your time. I oppose the proposed policy language. I'm a seventeen-year-old, and these decisions are going to affect people in my generation the most, and I think it's important to keep that in mind. There was recently an article published in Seattle Times about how Clealmah is considering bankruptcy. In November, an arbitrator ruled that the city owed a developer $22 million. The arbitrator said that the city repeatedly violated an agreement with the developer over its plans to build more than 950 homes in the wooded hills north of downtown. Clealmah has only a $5 million general fund budget and 29 employees. You may wonder how they got there. It was because the council members in 2011 were too cozy with the developers. The city council signed a lopsided deal to allow this huge development connection to the city by just a narrow road. The city later realized that the impacts would be just too crazy and would not be mitigated. Development doesn't pay for itself. In Bar Holdings' case, the unmitigated impact would be impaired wells, impaired salmon runs, extensions of fire protection emergency services, and many other hidden costs. When the county did its environmental review of Bar Holdings' policy language, it marked not applicable for all the questions on the CIPA checklist, but that's not allowed. The State Supreme Court said so just last September with King County versus Friends of Sammamish Valley. Impacts from a swap are to be accepted, so please redo your determination of non-significance. You don't want people looking back in ten years and saying that this was a dumb decision being made here with Bar Holdings. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Fleming with Bev Bassett on deck.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Am I to speak into this mic? Or at...
It's best if you do because it helps focus on the Zoom here well.
All right. If you're not on Zoom, or even if you're on Zoom, I invite everyone to go outside and look up and look at all the room that there is. And we should be building up and not out. There's so much room up above us. I think the sky goes up a couple of stories at least. So regarding the UGA swap framework, I maintain that you cannot continue to go forward with this concept and system, which is based on how things have always been. There needs to be an environmental report on the whole concept of this swapping business. There's not a master plan of, it's going to be this swap, that swap, all this negotiation. There needs to be a master plan. And also, I want to speak out that I am embarrassed and outraged that this county is both working, promoting that they will work with tribes, while at the same time, the use of the word "salish" is being used, which is a sacred area, which has been, that word has been brought back by the tribes into use, and it denotes a sacred area of existence. And it's being used by developers who want to further rape this land, which is stolen. And they're not using that term "salish" in Salish Landing out of respect or because they want to notate that. That's a sales gimmick, and it's an insult. And I'm just, I'm appalled by the use of this term in this development or proposed development, and they should be ashamed. I'm just outraged for my fellow citizens who might feel the same.
Bev Bassett, and then I think we go to Zoom.
I'm the caboose.
You're the caboose in the room.
My name is Bev Bassett. I live at 1218 Marion Street. I oppose this policy amendment. I will now read the comments of a person who could not make it today, members of the county commission. I thank you for this opportunity to have my opinion heard. For the record, my name is Thomas Wild. I live on Sheldon Road Southeast in Oley. As a former member of the Oregon Ledge, who served on both the Senate Water and Land Use Committee and was vice chair of the Ag and Natural Resources Committee, one who was a sitting member of the committee that put into place the Oregon Salmon Recovery Plan. I'm fairly familiar with some of the issues. He does not speak in opposition to the actual development, actually commends the developer for bringing forth a thoughtful and well-designed living community. He speaks in opposition to the location. On paper, it looks like a good idea, but thus where it ends. The location is not only a critical aquifer recharge area, but close proximity to the Deschutes. And the fact that rivers such as this have a close connection to the adjoining aquifers makes this highly unsuitable location. Would like to point out that Thurston County is in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, most liberal in the country, where most environmental groups like to litigate issues due to the highest likelihood of favorable outcomes. And federal legislation is very costly and time-consuming, 3.5-year timeframe being standard. And he can assure you that with the issues involving this property, federal legislation is almost a certainty. Additionally, the fact that this is a critical recharge area and has potential negative impacts on all area residents using wells for their potable water, considering the county requires any landowner to have proof of potable water on a property prior to issuing a building permit, it leaves the county liable for any changes in the aquifer quality and output. And should that occur, there's a definite likelihood of a class action lawsuit against the county and the developer. However, did I say as much as I can say?
Just about.
Are you going to hush me up?
You did a great job of getting a lot out there.
Well, I tried. I just talked slower than these people.
No, you did. You got a lot out there.
Anyway, I'll give you, I'll give you this.
Please.
I'll give you this to the clerk, and she can pass it on to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move to Zoom. Did I cover everyone in the room? No. Marcy Cleaver.
I'm Marcy Cleaver. I live out in South Bay area. I just want to say that there's a lot of work to be done.
Marcy, could you use the microphone just because of the...
Yeah.
Thank you. There's a lot of work to be done on this, and I think the people have spoken loudly today. I think that, that, I think a lot, but there's five of you out there now. There used to be three of you, and I don't know how you got all the work done that you got done, and I'm glad that there's five of you. But we also need to think about the planning department. The planning department is understaffed for all the work that I think they have to do, the decisions they make sometimes are made with a lot of pressure to get something out the door, and they may not be the right decisions. And so I encourage you to look at the planning department and maybe adding some better flow, some better staffing, just making sure that the decisions are made for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom that didn't get a chance that intended to give public comment? Okay, let's go to Zoom. Upper left corner, was it Shannon? You have four minutes, sorry, you have two minutes. I'll give you a, you probably can't hear the bell. I'll ask you to wrap up when you hit the two-minute mark, and then just finish that thought, and appreciate your cooperation.
I'll be quick. I, thank you all members for all your hard work and time. I'm here today to urge you to not approve the swap law, and I oppose it. My husband and my children are Native American in a federally recognized tribe, and I'm just really sad to hear the conflict of interests with these developers. I think there's a huge conflict of interest here. And I think that it just needs to be put to rest now. This is sacred land, and you can't just put anything you want on it. This is the Calix Tribe land. This is their trail, and they didn't ask the tribal chairman of the Calix Tribe. They went to the Saxone Tribe, and I don't understand that at all. And we just need to be all good stewards of the land. I can tell you that being in Tumwater for the last ten years, the amount of development that has gone on is absolutely insane. I drive just to the grocery store, and all I see are land action, the big yellow land action use signs. And I think we need to slow down and look what we are leaving for our kids and their kids. And for that reason, I oppose this, and I hope you do too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Doug Maugh is up next.
Great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Doug Maugh. I'm here representing the Thurston Chamber of Commerce. The Thurston Chamber supports approving the resolution to adopt the updates to the countywide planning policies as presented in the staff report. The proposed amendments are a reasonable framework to implement the new state laws at the local level. The proposed amendments, I'd like to note, are agnostic and blind to any proposed project or development proposal. The chamber urges approving the updates to the countywide planning policy as presented. Thank you very much.
Ms. Cronenberg, we heard from you earlier. Did you have... So I'm going to move forward. Okay, Karen Messmer. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Karen Messmer. I live at 1907 Lakers Drive Southeast in Olympia. I've lived inside the urban area for over 39 years, and I'm happy to have the urban area become more dense. Welcome more housing inside the urban area. We do not need a land swap or change in the urban growth areas. This is being brought forward in order to do that. So it is relevant that we speak to the potential outcomes. Any UGA swap does not fit with the stated policies in the county comprehensive plan and the Sustainable Thurston Plan. Any changes in the UGA will not move us to lower emissions that you have committed to in the climate mitigation plan. This does not fit with the regional transportation plan, which states in Policy 1A, "Commit to the development and implementation of land use plans, development patterns, and design standards that encourage walking, bicycling, transit use, and other alternatives to driving alone." Let's not get distracted by the images of sidewalks and some small amount of services inside the potential development from this swap. This is not where people will meet their daily needs. This kind of residential development would be relatively remote and will generate car traffic and greenhouse gas emissions. What is not shown is that those plans, is in those plans, is how the citizens of the county or Tumwater will pay for the more road improvements that people who live there will expect to have happen. Adults and children who live there will not drive, who cannot drive, will need to be driven everywhere since the bus doesn't go there.
Ms. Messmer, will you do to wrap up?
We're not attending to the additional trips. Please consider that you don't need to adopt this policy with the assumption that you will be making changes to the urban growth area. Those are not necessary.
Thank you. Bottom left corner, I can't read that name.
Brenda Wilmouth. Brenda Wilmouth.
Brenda Wilmouth, you have two minutes.
Oh, thank you. I did send in written comment, but I'll go ahead. I want, I would, my name's Brenda Wilmouth, and I've lived in East Olympia. and I've lived in East Olympia for nearly, probably often on sixty years. I also share the development history of Chambers Prairie. Historically, that's what East Olympia was named, and we are neighboring Bush Prairie. Um, I just wanna say that I am opposed to the current swap. I'm generally opposed to all swap policies, but, uh, I'm opposed to the policy changes that you will be reviewing. And I ask that you, um, not be hasty in any changes that are being made and pause the growth of these really sensitive areas. Uh, one of the, my main concerns is the water, the groundwater, the Deschutes River, the aquifer, and possible continued PFAs being put in our groundwater when filtration has already shown that it is not a remedy and the domino effects that swaps could have on our law enforcement, our fire, our schools, roads, and the monetary burden to the residents that have diligently developed the existing communities over decades. So I feel it with our climate needs, we have exactly what we need to help mitigate our climate, which would be the greater good for our future generations and all our wildlife. Chambers Prairie was a, noted as a pioneer hunting ground. We have eagles, deer, we have the salmon to think about in the rivers and the fish. But most of all, we have our human population. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Lazar, you're up next. Two minutes.
Thanks very much. We don't need swaps at this time. The UGA is already excessive in size. The Buildable Lands Report says that there are about nine thousand excess, uh, buildable units in the existing UGA above and beyond the twenty-year forecast. That's to be updated next year. If it then shows that the UGA is deficient, then and only then should we consider increasing densities within the existing UGA or adding additional land to it. In the Growth Management Act, uh, the goals in thirty-six seventy A O two O, urban growth, encourage development in urban areas where adequate public facilities and services exist, uh, or can be provided in an efficient manner. Reduce sprawl, reduce the inappropriate conversion of undeveloped land into sprawling low-density development. In Deal versus Mason County, the appeals court ruled that a UGA must not be larger than necessary to accommodate the OFM population forecast. Because the existing UGA is more than adequate, it would be unlawful to add additional buildable land to the existing UGA. Please oppose, uh, these policy changes. Wait for the state rules to come out and wait until the new Buildable Lands Report is completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ron Gleason or Ray Gleason? Can you, can you, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you.
One minute.
My name is Ray Gleason. I live at six two-two-six Cedar Flats Road Southwest in Olympia. I oppose the proposed policy change. I will now read comments from someone who could not be here. That person is Larry Seberg. I live at six two-one-one Hickory Court Southeast in Olympia. I am a Nisqually tribal elder. However, I am not here in official capacity, and my views do not necessarily represent those of the Nisqually tribe. I am an eighty-five-year-old descendant of Nisqually Chief Leshy, as well as a descendant of pioneer Charles Eaton, who is a homestead, who homesteaded on Tunnequah Prairie near Offutt Lake in the eighteen forties and where I lived my early years with my grandfather's Charles Waldrick, born in eighteen sixty-seven. I offer this family's history to illustrate my deep connection to such rural areas, thus having my, having an interest in the regulatory oversight of their appropriate development. Therefore, for your consideration, I am voicing my opposition to the proposed UGA land swap policy amendment. From my viewpoint, certainly being no legal or land use policy expert, it is sure, it sure looks like a convenient loophole by which land developers could circumvent compliance with the county zoning regulations. Should this proposed UGA land swap policy be approved, I fear it may serve as a precedent to enable and encourage further urban sprawl. Please do not approve this policy amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did I catch everyone on the Zoom? I think I did. So I think we have reached the end of the public comment. And I wanna thank everybody for being here. I wanna thank the young people who are here. We very rarely get students to come and give us their opinion. That was really cool. Next steps for the board are, uh?
Ashley.
Ashley, maybe? Just to tell us where we go from here, and then we can close our public.
The board cannot take any final action tonight, given the. Yeah. The board cannot take any final action this evening due to timelines on the environmental review. Um, so the earliest any final action could be taken on any of the updates is at your first meeting in February, so that'd be February fourth.
And could we look to schedule a work session before that time?
We can definitely work to schedule a work session before that time if the board desires.
All right, I think we heard enough that I would appreciate that. Questions, I got a long list of questions and, um.
Chair, if I could, um, if commissioners have questions, they can just route them to me, and then I'll work with Ashley and CPED so that we can schedule that work session.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Are we going to board comments or anything like that, or we?
It's up to you. There's a lot to unpack. Um, my head's, I'm still, I, I, I mean, I just, when, as we move forward, I wanna make sure that we are very clear that, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's causation and correlation. And, you know, there was a lot of mixing of ideas here. And anyone that was talking about any proposed development, that is different than the policy that we're trying to work on. And it, and it's important that, you know, everybody said draft policy. So, you know, I, I listen to everybody here, and I look forward to working with our CPED director to, you know, work on the draft policy and take into consideration everybody's comments. But that's different. Policy is different than development proposal. And if you came in and you were talking about a development proposal or, you know, what was going on in your backyard, that's different than the, the county-level policy work that's being done. So one of the, I just, as an example of a question, you know, a lot of folks came in and were very upfront and said, I oppose UGA swaps, period, as a concept. And, um, state law, the, the state has passed two different, you know, frameworks for this. So I would have a question of, do we have that latitude? If we agreed with the people that didn't like UGA swaps, period, do we have that kind of latitude? I mean, I, it's unclear to me, and, uh, I would be interested in that. Just, that's just one question. I will email some other ones, but just to give an example of kind of, um, something that I would wanna talk a little bit more about. Um, any other comments from the board before we?
Yeah, I think I'll make a comment. Yeah, I, I really appreciate, you know, everyone, everyone that came out and people who, um, you know, spent the time with us today. You know, one of the things for me, and I think this is for us to talk about it, and, um, really would be to revisit, you know, I, I prepared for this today. Um, you know, I met with many, many people. I looked at, um, you know, as a new, as a new person to this, to this thing, I looked at our strategic plan, our comprehensive plan. I looked at any applicable RCWs, the Regional Housing Council Plan. I looked at the Buildable Land Study. Um, and, you know, all of those pieces and all of those guiding documents were able to give me a clear understanding of what, where, how we're supposed to be doing these things. And so for us, I'm just wondering, you know, how this relates back to our comprehensive plan and to all of those different pieces in our region and the goals that we have set in our region, the people of the region that have set those goals and those plans. And so I would like us to make sure that we're just double-checking, um, that, that whatever updates we make, just like Ty just said, which is that we're not deciding on, on the, on a development today. We're deciding how to draft a policy and how to get that put into place. And, um, and so I just hope that we can look really closely, um, at, at it in it so that it, it meets, uh, our plans and our goals that are in those documents.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Move to close the public hearing. Just a second. Uh, any discussion on that? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. 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 Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Will be follow-up next one.